For Monday, April 5th, 2021. This evening, we have an agenda that is pretty typical of April. It's got a fair amount of activity relative to budget activity as well as our weekly coronavirus community update. However, this evening, we're going to start with a traffic engineering study update from McMahon and Associates. Excuse me. Real briefly for folks to understand, back in December 2020 at Special Town Meeting, Article 15 authorized funding for the town to hire a traffic engineer to study commercial vehicle activity on a select number of streets, namely Woodland Street, South Street, Bullard Street, Fisk Street, Lowland Street, High Street, and Locust Street. In a moment, we'll hear from McMahon and Associates about the task that they undertook earlier this calendar year to study this traffic. We expect this evening to hear some data and some decision points on their work. Prelimarily, I view the information, as did my colleagues over the weekend, that was forwarded to us by the town administrator. I think what folks are about to hear is quite important, and frankly, it fulfills a task that this board has undertaken this past year to examine the impact of commercial vehicles on our roadways. So this evening, I'll turn it over to McMahon and Associates. The gentleman who I think will be with us is Steve. Steve, good evening. Are you with us?
We have Michael.
Yes. Hi, good evening.
Hi, Mike. If you would be so kind as to introduce yourself, your title, and any other members of the team, if there are any, and other than that, the floor is yours.
Sure. I'm Mike Pompilly. I'm a Senior Project Engineer with McMahon Associates. I'm the only one at the meeting this evening. And if you could allow me to share my screen, I have a short presentation.
Go right ahead. One sec. You should be all set.
Okay. Can everyone see the slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So just a little bit of background. So the town contracted with us to assist them in collecting traffic data and submitting a request for heavy commercial vehicle exclusions on seven roadways in town. A heavy commercial vehicle exclusion is a prohibition of through trucks that are two and a half tons or greater in carrying capacity. So it doesn't affect local deliveries, just trucks using streets as a through route. The roadway needs to have a viable alternate route. State numbered routes like Washington Street and Concord Street are not eligible, even if they're under town jurisdiction. And the guidelines are spelled out in Section 10A-9 of the Massachusetts Amendments to the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or the MUTCD. NASDOT is looking for a few warrants in order to support heavy vehicle exclusion. Typically, they're looking for a truck volume of five to eight percent, which results in deficiency in operations or safety on the roadway. If the pavement structure is deteriorating because of wheel loading from heavy vehicles, or if the trucks are generating noise in a residential area, which typically they'll only allow that for a truck exclusion overnight from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, excuse me, which Holliston actually does have on a portion of Lowland Street right now. The documentation that they request is a 24-hour automatic traffic recorder count. If you're just looking for a nighttime exclusion, those 12 nighttime hours are sufficient. An evaluation of the pavement condition, the land use and zoning along the roadway, traffic control along the roadway, and the viable alternate route for truck traffic. So we collected 24-hour traffic counts in February, Thursday, February 25th, on these seven corridors. We collected traffic volumes, vehicle classification, and speeds. The volumes I'm going to go through are unadjusted, the actual volume that was counted on that day. No adjustments for seasonality or because of COVID conditions. And the percent trucks are those trucks that are two and a half tons or greater carrying capacity. So we collected data on South Street, just one of the roadways, and we found about 2,300 vehicles per day, two-way traffic on South Street. 14% was trucks, actually quite high. And we also collected speed data and found that the 85th percentile speed on South Street is about 40 miles per hour. On Woodland Street, we counted roughly 4,500 vehicles and about 6% trucks, again around 40 miles per hour. On Fisk Street, around 1,750 vehicles, just over 10% trucks. And again, traffic was moving around 40 miles per hour. On Lowland Street, just under 2,000 vehicles with almost 12% trucks, again speeds nearly 40 miles per hour. And on Bullard Street, less than 1,000 vehicles per day and almost 13% trucks, and speeds, again, close to 40 miles per hour. And then on High Street, just under 2,400 vehicles per day and around 7% trucks traffic. The 85th percentile speed was about 35 miles per hour. And on Locust Street, there were about 1,750 vehicles and around 10% trucks, and speeds around 35 miles per hour. Some other concerns that we noted in the draft memo that we sent to the town administrator, the roadways typically are narrow. They're, some of these are scenic roadways. There are trees and utility poles right up to the edge of pavement that cause trucks to tend to drive in the middle of the roadway, which is a safety concern. They also obstruct sight distance, particularly around curves. So that could be an issue with a truck going in one direction and encroaching on the opposing lane of travel. The pavement condition was generally in good condition. We noticed some deterioration on Fisk, but in general, there was some cracking along the roadways, running along wheel paths consistent with heavy truck traffic. The culvert on Bullard Street was noted in the public forum back in August. It collapsed because of repeated truck traffic. And then also particularly around crossings of the Upper Charles Trail, especially on Lowland Street near Woodland, there are pedestrians, bicyclists, and equestrians who use the roadway to access the trail, and the truck traffic creates conflicts with them. So open it up to any comments anyone has on the data that we've put together.
Thank you, Michael. We'll start with Mr. Ben Sparrow. Ben, any questions for McMahon?
I don't really have any questions about the data. Most of my questions would mostly be directed towards Travis or my colleagues here, but follow-up in the future. The data seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, we'll get to that in a second.
Absolutely.
Any questions for McMahon?
Yeah, so Mike, thanks. Nice to see you, by the way. And you put up the 85th percentile speeds. I'm wondering, for those listening, could you just explain the significance of 85th percentile speed, what that number is? I always could use a refresher, and it's not something that people commonly, I think, understand.
Sure. The 85th percentile speed is the traffic that 85% of the traffic is going at or below. Typically, also, under current NASDOT policy, it's what's used to set posted speed limits, that they require a speed study, collecting free-flow speed of vehicles for two hours. And the 85th percentile speed is the speed limit, or the nearest five miles per hour to the 85th percentile speed. So if you were to go out today to try to post a speed limit on those roadways where the 85th percentile speed is 40 miles per hour, you would end up with a 40 mile per hour speed limit.
So the report that you have did not break down the speeds based on time. Or at least it wasn't presented in the report. I'm assuming that information would be available. So your 85th percentile speed is based on 24 hours worth of data, kind of collectively looked at?
Yeah, that's correct. And the raw data, which is in the appendix of the report, does have a speed broken down by hour.
Okay, okay. All right. And then in terms of mitigation, the report you prepared is specific to truck exclusions?
Right.
All right. So you're not prepared today to talk about other mitigation efforts?
No, this was just collecting the data to submit to NASDOT for heavy vehicle exclusions.
Thank you.
Mike, I have a couple of technical questions. The first is, it appears as though McMahon laid down the APRs on February 25th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Does NASDOT require any additional snapshots of time to validate the percentage of heavy vehicles, or is that sufficient?
No, typically, a 24-hour count on a single weekday when school's in session is sufficient.
And the second question is, you noted that the numbers reflected here are not controlled for any COVID-related traffic impact. McMahon must be doing a fair amount of traffic work across the Commonwealth these days. Can I imagine that COVID has had some impact on suppressed vehicle traffic, including commercial traffic?
Overall traffic, yes. Commercial traffic, not as much, because deliveries are still happening. If anything, I haven't actually looked to verify this specifically, but if anything, it's likely that truck percentages would skew higher because of COVID, because there are fewer general passenger car trips going to work and going to leisure activities, and more truck trips of people having, you know, goods delivered instead of shopping.
So in other words...
Anecdotally.
Okay, thank you. In other words, the data that's shown here in your report is likely to be representative of a time before COVID.
It may skew higher on the truck percentages, and I don't believe NASDOT would ask for an adjustment, though.
I see. All right. My board, I think, has some questions about next steps. Is that your place, or is that Travis's place?
Um, I think it's an overlap of both. Our next step would be finalize the report and send it to Travis for submission to NASDOT.
Okay. There's a couple things. We could talk about that now, or we have Michael with next steps. I don't know if you want to have the public ask any questions.
Public after we find out what the next step is, because I'm sure we're going to answer some questions that'll be coming in that way, too.
Okay, sure. So one thing I would point out, Mike's data is up online for anybody who wants to see it at home. The IT director loaded it earlier today. If you go to the front page of our website, you can see that data. The data would be put into an application to MassDOT. We've obviously been through that process recently on Woodland Street. Woodland Street is included in the data that Mike has put up for us at our request through our procurement of these services. And the reason for that was that MassDOT looked at our application on Woodland, said it was compelling and that we were going in that direction. That was updated to us by Senator Spilka and Rep. Dykema when they were with us, that that was in the right direction. The request for MassDOT was that the data we submitted was for 12-hour counts. The requirements call for 24-hour counts, that's included in the data from McMahon. The other thing that they wanted to see was a change in the alternate route to say that the alternate route for Woodland Street is to stay on 16, which is, would be also in the application put together for us by McMahon. So if you'd like to sort of move into that conversation, the data that we put up online is strictly the data. The actual process, obviously McMahon is prepared to help us approach DOT on, and then it is a number of streets that we put in the RFP for these services. But really, it would be up to the board to approach all of them, excuse me, approach MassDOT with all of them, some of them, a combination. And so certainly, that's a discussion for the board to have.
Okay. Before we turn it over to the public, Mike, I have a quick follow-up question for you, if I may.
Sure.
The traffic volume summary that you present in your report, I believe it's early on, maybe page one, indicates daily two-way traffic volume unadjusted. And then in the final column, other percentages that you just spoke about relevant to heavy vehicles. Are the numbers noted the total traffic counts, or are those the numbers of heavy vehicles traveling during that snapshot?
That's the total traffic count.
So you'd have to take a percentage to find the total number of vehicles that represent heavy vehicles, correct?
Correct.
Okay. This information may have some use for us down the road when it comes to our appeal to the state for assistance in looking at funding for improved state roadways. Theoretically, we'll be moving, I'm guessing off the top of my head, thousands of trucks onto state highways where they belong, frankly, but that will result in the state highway receiving more wear and tear, and obviously, the need for more deferred maintenance. So we may be looking to extrapolate some of that data down the road, to the extent that you might be of any assistance of just letting you know. It's likely to be useful for us in our negotiations with the state. All right.
Did you have a follow-up question, Tina?
Well, yeah, I want to follow up with what John just asked or mentioned, Mike. Can you just describe what hap... So MassDOT is District 3 that gets this report?
Yep.
So the town of Holliston goes forward with a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, MassDOT will have all of this information in the, from the data analysis that McMahon did?
Yes.
Okay, that goes to District 3 directly?
Yes.
Okay. A particular department at District 3?
Oh, traffic.
Okay. Got it. All right, thank you.
It's actually addressed to Barry Laurie, the highway director.
Right. And so the team that we actually had out here on both of our site visits is still the point person that there's still, so we had one person from MassDOT on our call on Lowland Industrial in August. That individual is part of that team. Additionally, the woman who was out on two of our site visits is another point person, all under sort of the Barry Laurie.
So the same people who did the site walk in Holliston back in the fall will also be receiving this report and this data?
Yeah, it goes through Joe Farley's department.
I'm sorry?
It's Joe Farley is the traffic engineer. That's his department.
Okay.
And that was the gentleman who was on the Lowland call in August.
Yeah.
The public forum. And then Laurie works with him, Laurie Shattuck, and Laurie was on the site visit.
Great.
And after that, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but so we sent it to that group. They review it, and then they also sent it to the Boston office for a final review before we would get a response from them.
Right.
As part of the reason that this is a, this is not a tomorrow authorization that we're going to receive, it's going to take a little time. Anything you'd add to that, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't submitted heavy commercial vehicle exclusion during COVID work conditions, but yeah, in the past, it takes several months for them to review and approve one of these.
One of those is already underway, and that would be Woodland Street.
Right. It's from talking to Travis, it sounded like they were just looking for the count, and then Woodland would go pretty quickly.
Okay, all right. Did you want to follow up questions now, Ben, or do you want to go to the public comment?
It's up to you as the chair. I mean, I do have follow-up questions, but...
Go ahead. Ask them now, and then we'll go to the public.
So my, so a couple things. So the first is, is that once this, let's say hypothetically, this goes forward, what is, you know, what does that look like? You know, so we're putting up signs, are we doing anything else that's going to take place? How does that, what's the next steps?
Well, functionally, administratively speaking, I can tell you that once the exclusions are granted, signs go up, as you said, then we're in the enforcement space.
Right.
This evening, we asked Chief Stone to join us so that he could give us a brief update on how HPD is readying for that period in time. Chief, are you with us?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Could you briefly give us an update this evening on how HPD is pivoting and getting ready for enforcement of potential motor vehicle exclusions, commercial motor vehicle exclusions?
Sure. Through my involvement with both the department and the Traffic Advisory Committee, we've been hearing petitions over the last several months, much of which are relative to these conversations being had tonight. We have had multiple officers out on the roads on all three shifts enforcing traffic as we always have. It's been listed as a priority since our strategic plan back in 2012 and continues to be since 2017. So traffic from HPD's side has always been a priority of ours. Just recently, as many of know, we created a traffic safety officer who's designated to traffic safety enforcement. We've sent that officer to just about 240 hours of training in terms of crash reconstruction and crash analysis. We've also added an additional motorcycle officer to our motorcycle unit so that that piece of equipment is out on the road starting the spring throughout the fall. So we have several areas where we've been concentrating, and certainly, these areas with new enforcement efforts will be part of our priority.
Thanks, Chief. Any follow-up on that? More, it's more of an administrative kind of thing, is that how do, how are the trucks going to know about an alternative and know to stay away? Like, are they going to be able to sort of see the routes? Are we going to update GPS? How does that, how does that work exactly?
Mike, do you have any sense of how that, any decisions on commercial motor vehicle exclusions and their approvals at the NASDOT level get fed into any kind of wayfinding software programs?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Sorry, NASDOT does have online mapping of truck exclusions. I'm not sure if those feed into, into GPS software or not, but, you know, truckers are supposed to know to reference them to see which routes they're allowed on.
Chief Stone, you had your hand up there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I know this came up recently at our Traffic Advisory Committee. Vice Chair Hyde might be able to speak a little bit better than I could, but I know we have had some luck with one of our committee members advocating for the exclusion or trying it out via, I believe it was Waze, but one of the apps, and I think he was able to get some success there. So I think once the restrictions are in place, I think it's just a matter of notifying them and, you know, updating them on which roads can and cannot be used.
Yeah, and I recall that when we had DOT out in the fall to do the site visits with us, they did speak about the fact that they have individuals within. I thought it was within District 3 who could contact, whatever our IT director will rule as eyes when I say, is I think it's the platform for all GPS apps. But anyway, MassDOT has a way to communicate information out. I think that's something on the town side that we would turn to our town administrator to request is done when we submit the application and then, assuming it's approved, that that information gets sent out by MassDOT through, I think, channels they already have in place to get that information to the commuting app and the platforms. Is that the right word, Chris?
Platform is always the right word when it's IT. So the answer is yes, there are mechanisms. I think one of the concerns that we found in a number of areas is we have sort of tried to, you can try to impact those things without this process, and they don't always take for an extended period of time. Sometimes there'll be a refresh, and they're sort of gone. One of the things is that there's going to be actual physical signage. Those signs are all, and I had a conversation briefly with MassDOT today, and they sent them, you know, the MUTCD approved sign that relates to a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion route is going to identify a truck route. I can actually, do I have the ability to share? I do. All right. So this was the MUTCD sign that they sent me, right, that identifies a truck route. That is not great if you're in a car, but I mean, eventually, essentially, that, those are the options that you have under MUTCD to put these things up. The other one is going to be this. Apparently, that does not just show. Hold on, let me pull this down.
You were on the wrong platform there.
I was on the wrong platform, clearly. All right, let me pull up the other sign that will sort of indicate. This is a sign that MUTCD approved as well for heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. The problem that I see for this one on a street unlike, so let's take Woodland, excuse me, let's take South Street, for example, where there's not a lot of businesses that a truck will be on, we, you know, it's relatively easy to enforce from the police department. There should be no through truck traffic. If we were to put this, if the site board were to approve the application, that were to go to MassDOT, be approved, we were to be putting up these signs. It's pretty clear on South Street that that sign would make sense. The issue that I see with that particular sign as a heavy commercial vehicle, on Woodland, for example, is if I'm a truck and I'm going to the school to make a delivery, right, that's where we're going to need to have more public outreach and those types of things. At the end of the day, the signage that we can put up is also regulated by MassDOT, and so we're a little bit confined by that. The truck route signs that I put up first would be sort of how we would physically define those types of things. But again, the truck route for a number of these things is to stay, stay on 16, do not cut through here, you're staying on 16. That's the alternate route. So impacting GPS, but then the physical signs as well. Because one of my, one of my concerns is that I don't want to have a future, you know, some road that we hadn't thought of that suddenly became the cut-through because it does not have a truck exclusion, and suddenly, we have traffic moving down those. I mean, there's not that many alternatives. We don't have a giant town, so there's not going to be a lot of those things. It's just, we may not anticipate how another road gets used, and I just kind of, I just want to be, keep that on the radar in general. Have we had...
Let's put one point to that.
Sure.
Right, so some of the equipment that's procured through the December Town Meeting as well, I think, would allow us to track some of the changes in behavior, right?
Right.
We have the ability to count as deployed by the police department. We have a machine that can go out and sort of get that information, a change in behavior. You know, we can't do it on every single street all at once, and maybe that's part of the sort of deployment.
Right.
But we can capture that data internally now.
Got it. Okay.
So that, may I ask another question? Yeah, so that brings up another question I have. John asked about a need to go back and revisit any of these counts, Mike, and you had said no, there's no need to do like a seasonal adjustment or a post-COVID adjustment. But I do think that that's what Travis just alluded to, the fact that the town has equipment now that allows us to kind of get a snapshot to see. I think if we get any negative feedback from DOT, that option still exists for the town, that we could pursue further if we ever needed to, because if DOT is being unfavorable on any of the applications that we want to submit, we would potentially have the ability to go back with seasonal impacts now accounted for and do our own kind of baseline assessment and then revisit it. I'm feeling optimistic about that fact, that we have some controls here in the town to take another look if we need to.
I'm feeling optimistic. It's a great point, but I'm feeling optimistic because, quite frankly, these numbers are bearing out what we've been hearing from residents.
Which is, if you look at it, it's validating in many ways, what's going on out there. If we may, if I may, at this point, I'll turn it over for public comment. I'm sure there's a few questions. If you do have any questions about this topic, please raise your hand. You'll be recognized. Please name your, give yourself your name and street address, please. David Bastille, I see your hand up. You'll be first. What's on your mind?
Okay, can you hear me?
I'm clear, sir.
Okay. This has come up in discussions with neighbors, as you know, south. Oh, sorry. 136 Rockland Street in Holliston. South Street, as you go south, becomes Clark Street in Medway, and I'm wondering if there's any coordination with the town of Medway. Trucks often turning off 109 and coming north on Clark, which becomes south. Where would they encounter any signage telling them that there is a limit that either begins at the beginning of Clark Street or it begins at the town line, which is kind of an awkward place for them to find that sign? Or is it just going to be Waze and the other similar apps that are going to be guiding them?
So it's a great question, David. I can tell you, last fall, as Travis noted earlier, we had NASDOT out on two occasions evaluating a number of different locations. And while we cited at South Street, the town manager from Medway, as well as several members of his police department, met us and wholeheartedly agreed with the need for coordinated commercial vehicle exclusion effort. Travis, if you want to pick up on this, I know you recently had a conversation with the town manager about these developments, and I know Chief Stone has had some conversations with Medway PD to affirm that, but if you wanted to update that information, please?
Yeah, so one of the things that Michael Pompilly's report will say is, you know, that as it relates specifically to South Street, that we would be looking for, that's to be in some way, either our application with their support or a joint application to MassDOT for this. Medway is interested in impacting Clark Street, the same issue that Holliston has, you know, in general with trucks on South Street is impacting Clark as well. And they have been supportive of either supporting our application or having a joint application. So one of the things, too, is that the alternate route, I believe, Mr. Pompilly showed earlier up on the screen, is that the alternate route to South Street includes Medway, and therefore, it's very important that they be in support of this, which they are. And I believe...
Yep. Any follow-up on Mr. Bastille? Is that satisfactory?
That's fine, thank you.
Any other questions this evening from folks on the Zoom call relative to this traffic engineering study? All right. We do have one. I'm not, I'm afraid I don't know. Oh, okay, Suzanne, FDA, Suzanne Adelman. Good evening, Suzanne. What's on your mind?
Good evening. Thank you for doing this. My question is regarding signage at the end of South Street. We're talking about a no-truck sign. Can we also get a no-left turn for truck sign? Is there such a thing, such a sign that states that trucks that are on Route 16 heading west toward 495? Is there such a thing as a no-left-turn truck sign?
So my first reaction would be, that would be something that would be put through the Traffic Advisory Committee for consideration. Has there, has there been previous discussions about that, Suzanne? Has there, has there been previous discussions about that, Suzanne?
I believe, yes, there has been. I, I would defer back to Chief Stone what the answer to that question was. But we'd like a sign that says no left turn for trucks so that, that they don't mistake it. The problem with South Street is it's a, it's a lobster trap. Once you're in there, there's no getting out. So, um, we'd like a way to really deter trucks from, from making that left turn.
Chief, uh, do you have any recollection as to, uh, where those requests stand? Are they pending the CMBE application?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this came up on Thursday's meeting at Traffic Advisory Committee. We talked about it at length. The issue with putting a no left turn truck sign onto South Street right now is there's no enforcement arm behind it. So we could put the sign up, um, as a recommendation, but it would be advisory only. It would be confusing when tickets are not written and enforcement actions are not taken because there isn't a truck exclusion at the time. How, at the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, we did discuss this process is well underway and that it would be in our best interest to wait for the exclusion to be approved and then install signs that would give us the power to enforce a violation. Uh, we have taken one step with MassDOT and we're looking at, uh, truck route signs. And these signs would be placed on Route 109 and Medway, as well as Route 16 and Holliston, suggesting trucks use straight ahead toward Milford, uh, toward Route 495. However, if a truck doesn't follow that recommendation, it does take a left on South Street or a right on Clark Street, that right now currently would be unenforceable. So our recommendation is to wait, let the process play out. The exclusion sounds like it's coming, the data supports it, and that way we can have an enforcement arm with it.
All right, Suzanne, so it's, uh, something that I think we'll have to evaluate as a strong possibility once, uh, MassDOT approves of our application.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, any other questions this evening?
I have a question.
Hi, good evening Karen, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you, how are you?
Good, just your address, please, name and address.
Uh, Karen Apuzzo Langton, 100 Woodland Street. The volume on the TV feed's not coming through. Want you to know I have both on and I can't hear you on TV.
All right, we're going to get our very best on that.
Thank you for, uh, doing all these studies. They're quite compelling as you flip through them and you look at them. One wonders where people are going at 3:00 AM, but aside from that, I just want to point out that I believe the study was done either the 24th or the 25th of February. And during that time period, um, we noticed a considerable change within probably five hours, that all of a sudden truck traffic disappeared and it made us leave our houses and go try and figure out why. And when we saw the cables down, it was apparent to us what happened. So I just want to bring that to your attention because I think the number for the percentage of vehicle, heavy vehicles that use Woodland is much higher than that. They just happen to change their behavior. And at the same time, um, one of the businesses that is quite impactful was not in operation during that time period. So I wanted to bring that up. And then lastly, um, the question of enforcement obviously is, is quite concerning here. And I am wondering, what are you thinking? Like, how are you going to do it?
Uh, Chief Stone, would you like to take a stab at answering the question, how enforcement will be performed once these, and if these exclusions are adopted?
Sure, uh, so Ms. Langton, I think you hit the nail on the head in terms of changed behavior during that time. And I think over time and after education, I think drivers realize when wires are down or roads are closed or, you know, trees are down, over time, drivers will figure alternative routes. And that will be our approach, um, most likely with Woodland Street and other streets, including Bullard itself. A priority at the first is, is education. We want to educate drivers that A, there's now an exclusion in place, whether it be an hour operation or whether it be 24 hours a day, a wood-sized vehicle. Our, our job is going to be to educate and essentially change behavior. We want the trucks to learn, one, $100 ticket is not going to change or deter a driver from going down a certain road. If we educate them by knowing we're out there, by being visible, by conducting radar posts and traffic enforcement posts, over time, we're hoping that the behavior changes. After that period of education, we've given them the opportunity to learn the new way. If that's not sufficient, then we use our enforcement arm and, and go that route. So that would be probably the way we're going to handle Woodland Street to begin.
Thank you, Chief Stone. My next question would be about signage. Will there be signage in the industrial park as well?
I don't know, um, that's private property technically, isn't it?
Woodland Street's now owned.
Public ways, so, um, I, I mean, I think we're going to have to strategically look.
She's talking about within the park, not the, not the streets of getting there. Oh, interesting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I actually mean to be able to exit the park. Would people be exiting on Woodland, on Lowland Street to Woodland? If, how would you warn them to not do that?
Right, so within the public ways of, of the Lowland industrial area, there's going to, I mean, and that's part of the truck route, right? I mean, part of this, this concept as it related to the conversation previously on Woodland, is that, you know, the, the alternate route, uh, as you are on the, the side closest to Central, is that you are, you should not be using Woodland to cut from Central to 16, right? I mean, that, that's part of the exclusion. The other part of it is that if you are going to and from the Lowland Industrial Park, that the way in and out should be, um, Jeffrey, uh, to Whitney, excuse me, right? And so as part of that, when it relates to, to truck routes and those types of things, is, is going to be how we deploy the signage of those.
Go ahead, Tina.
Uh, so Karen, Chief Stone alluded to a conversation the Traffic Advisory Committee had this past week and, um, what he referenced was a sign that says designated truck route this way. We have not had the discussion either here at this board or on the Traffic Advisory Committee of what those signs might be within the industrial park. However, those signs do exist where you, you can directionally point out the designated truck route. So I think that's an option on the table for, for conversation. But Mike, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
She's in the corner. I, I, oh, go ahead, I have a question for you, but please go ahead.
Oh, sure, I said I'm still here.
Okay, thank you. So you have here, um, in, in the data analysis, you put up a proposal for truck exclusion that includes Lowland. Uh, there are businesses that currently operate on Lowland itself. How does that work?
The, the exclusion is only for through trucks. If there's a business on the street, they are still allowed to use the street.
You're exempt from the exclusion if you're going to a business on the street. And that's why, when I was differentiating South Street and Woodland earlier, if, if a truck is making delivery to our own school, they are exempt from the exclusion. Whereas there are, there should not be a significant number of trucks going to any business on South Street. There's very few, if any, um, that would need South Street to access a business. On Woodland, there are plenty of exceptions where you would be going to a business and therefore you are exempt from the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion.
How, so Mike, how, how does the truck know, the truck that's going to a business on Lowland? Is it, is, and you can say, yes, it is. Is it a matter of common sense that that truck driver then knows when they exit Lowland Street, they should not then enter Fifth Street if we were to consider a truck exclusion, if there was a truck exclusion in place there? That, the exemption refers only to the road on which the business is that they're visiting?
Right, if there's a designated truck route that's, you know, more, that, 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 you know, takes them to Route 16 or, or 126 faster, they should be taking that. But that, that's more of an outreach and an enforcement issue, it's hard to sign that. So if the business is on Lowland and it's more direct, uh, for them to get to Jeffrey than to get to Central via Fisk, then they should be taking Jeffrey if there's an exclusion on Fisk.
So Tina, when this goes into place, um, I would imagine this board, uh, will be sending out notice, especially in Lowland, to all the business owners about what's expected with regard to, uh, traffic route signs and things like that. To Karen's point, we're here to educate, but we're also not, we're not anxious to start handing out tickets. We want people to behave and realize the rules of the road. So I think some information sharing will be job one, once the exclusion, if the exclusion is granted.
Well, and if I remember correctly, we were already prepared to do that before we had the Lowland Industrial Park Forum back in August. I believe Chief was talking about a draft letter to the businesses. So it's something we've considered before.
All right, anything else, Karen?
Yes, thank you. So just trying to make sure I understand, because I do think that this area is a little more complicated. But a bus, a truck doing business on, on Lowland Street, but not Woodland, would access the industrial park by going Route 16 to Whitney, to Jeffrey, to Lowland? When they finish their business on Lowland, what is going to stop them from utilizing Lowland to Woodland to get out of the park? Because at that point, they may continue to go past the schools because that's faster, right? That's what a lot of trucks have been doing. Or they could go right and go up to the top of Woodland to 16. Like, what's going to stop them from using Lowland to access Woodland to exit?
I think there are three approaches the town would, would consider taking. One would be the enforcement out on Woodland Street, since you spoke of that as being, you know, the possibility, the hypothetical. Two would be the, the sort of designated truck route signage that we're referring to that would direct the truck exiting a business on Lowland to the designated truck route. And three would be education, which Chief Stone and others and, and this board as well would, would consider to the businesses to educate them that this is the new pattern of, of traffic. So I think you have three arms of, of, um, um, of an approach if these changes go into place, if the exclusions are in place.
Anything else, Karen?
No, and I, and I do, I, again, I want to say thank you for your attention to the matter. We really appreciate it and obviously we're willing to work with you any way possible once this gets going, um, to make sure that it is a success.
Thank you. Uh, we have a hand up, um, Carla Delman, I believe is the name. Carla, is that, are you on the line?
Yes, Carl Adelman.
Carl, I beg your pardon, uh, your address, sir?
46 South Street.
What's on your mind, Carl?
Quick, a quick question. So obviously, I, I appreciate the effort and I see that, uh, the streets all, all seem to fit within the criteria. But my question is, on the slide regarding other concerns, and I, I guess I can speak more to South Street since I live on it. But South Street basically hits all five of the criteria. And so my question is, would it be helpful for me to document those things for the application? Thank you.
Uh, Mike, do you want to take a stab at Mr. Adelman's question?
Um, sure, uh, we, we've already documented that in the draft report, but any specifics that you want to forward on, uh, certainly incorporate them.
You can go through, um, my email, uh, the town administrator's, uh, email through the website, and I can get that to Mr. Pompily. Uh, but, but all of the, the, where, where the rail trail crosses, where, where there's scenic routes, where there's, um, safe routes to schools and other components, um, Mr. Pompily has, um, made sure that those are referenced in any of these streets, um, before, for consideration of MassDOT.
And may I add to that as well, that even the, the possible article for a town meeting to designate South Street would also be included so that the town is looking to have town meeting approved south as a scenic road is mentioned or should be mentioned or will be mentioned.
Okay, Carl?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I guess the, the one thing that I just wanted to point out is we do have a culvert right in front of our house and, and just looking at it, it seems to have sunk in, I would say six to eight inches, uh, you know, below the roadway. So there are just little things like that that I wanted to point out. So I'm, I'm happy to, uh, put it into an email and send it in as, uh, as, uh, requested.
That'd be great, actually, if I could just, as a reason for any, I think we have a few South Street residents on the line. So there is an upcoming project and I'll try to get information out as soon as I have it, that we're working with Medway on a, on a culvert replacement that's sort of at the Medway, um, Holliston line, that will require, um, some, some doing on that street that will probably not, um, so a, at this point, right, if the select board votes to, to put forth an application to MassDOT, it's going to take a little while before we'll hear back on the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. One thing that, that will, uh, most likely happen between now and then is, um, a culvert replacement project that we've done a joint application on, um, uh, excuse me, grant, grant application on. So, um, you know, a, any of those other, those, those types of things would be great if you bring it to my attention, but we are also sort of, uh, pursuing numerous fixes in that regard as well.
Sounds good, thank you.
Are we good to go on each cat volume, Kristen? We are, great, all right, thank you. Uh, Susan Woodrow, your hand is up, uh, what's on your mind tonight?
Good evening, thank you very much for this amazing work. I, I have a question.
We, I know your address, but we need to have you.
Oh, I'm sorry, 136 Union Street. We have, uh, we have trucks here too. We'll get to that, I guess. So, um, but my question is about the, um, and I haven't seen the article on the warrant about designating South Street a scenic route. But I had an understanding that, um, the difference between a scenic route and a, and a listing on the National Historic Register would make a difference with regard to, to what extent the road could be changed, widened or, uh, reconfigured. Is there something that I should know about that as part of this discussion?
I don't know if we have the experts on the call this evening, Susan, to address that. No one from public works is with us. But I think, uh, we can have Travis follow up with Sean and, and possibly get an answer for you separately if you, if you'd like.
The reason that I ask is because we're watching what might happen if there's a, uh, with these new streetlights that may be, um, that may be put in, which trucks will be using. And, um, and whether if there, if it's a disaster, the, there will be a move by anyone to try and widen the roads. And that's our worry. So, um, I hope we use the correct process to protect the stone walls and the width of the roads and the cemetery and everything else down there. Thank you.
Susan, you're asking specifically about are any of the roads of the seven identified here, are any of those seven national historic roads, is that the?
Right, right, well, I know Rock, I mean, I think Rockland is a national historic road. But I think, but I don't know if the article is to make South Street a scenic. There's a difference between the scenic route, the local scenic route and the national historic. And what we will do is apply for the one that, um, would be most effective in terms of protecting the local, um, the local, uh, historical preservation of the area. And that's it.
Thank you, Susan.
So I can, um, follow up at Town Hall about that tomorrow, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions this evening relative to the traffic engineering study for, uh, McMahon Associates? All right, I see no other hands being raised, so we will move on. Folks, uh, thanks for joining us tonight on that particular item. Very interesting news, Mike, excellent work, we appreciate the, the work and, uh, look forward to the report being delivered to MassDOT. Mr. Hearn, you had a follow-up?
We would be looking for a vote on delivering that to MassDOT. Uh, if it is the intention of the board to send all of these all at once, um, to separate finalizing the Woodland Street and the, the South Street that I know you're interested in, or if you'd like this reported entirety to go to MassDOT, I'd just be looking for a vote for that.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to submit the entire report as submitted by McMahon Associates covering the streets listed as, uh, South Street, Woodland Street, Bullard Street, Fisk Street, Lowland Street, High Street and Locust Street.
Um, I'll make that motion with a question. Does it make sense, I mean, you know, I, I support the, the exclusion on all these streets, but does it make sense to include them all together? Does that create any differences or challenges with, uh, with respect to these, uh, uh, applications?
I would ask, um, Mike Pompily to weigh in on that. The only thing I would say is, is the only unusual one here is that we're already involved in the process on Woodland, um, and that what they're really looking for is just the 24-hour counts plus a, a change to the way that I had submitted the alternate route, although both of those are solved in what, um, Mike Pompily has given us. So to the question of, does it make sense to have them all together, um, Mike, do you have a response to that?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't think it really makes a difference. It's probably cleaner to submit them together, uh, especially the fact that Lowland, Fisk and Bullard and, and Woodland are all contiguous with each other, um, makes the alternate route descriptions easier.
Okay, I'm fine, I'll second.
Yeah, I will second that.
Do you have any questions on this?
I have no questions except Travis, are you also looking to amend the previously approved application on Woodland Street? I don't think that was in the original motion.
No, I, I think if this goes in here, um, as one report, I think we should be fine. You know, they're getting your traffic council thing.
Okay.
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Carrie's. Good, Travis?
I am, thank you.
All right, we will now move on to the next item on our agenda.
Thanks, Mike.
Coronavirus. Thank you, and good night. Coronavirus community update with Chief Mike Cassie, good evening, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Starting a little later than usual.
It's okay. I'll, uh, this is about the time, sometimes I'm finishing up. Um, so some good news, uh, today, we had, uh, another twenty cases that have recovered.
Hang on, there we go.
Slide number two. Nope, goes the wrong way. Okay, so, uh, we've had nineteen additional cases since last week, uh, which were three new cases on Tuesday, four new cases on Wednesday, and twelve new cases that were reported today. Uh, but there's a little bit of a wash because although we have nineteen new cases, uh, we've had twenty that were recovered, uh, and we were also notified last week by the Board of Health of one, uh, additional COVID-related fatality that has happened within the, the last couple of weeks. So currently, we have twenty active cases, uh, that are spread out over thirteen addresses. Those are represented at eight single cases at single-family homes, three clusters at single-family homes, and then two single cases at multifamily dwellings. And you will note that this is the first time in several weeks that we've had cases, once again, at multifamily dwellings. Uh, in terms of, uh, just the, the graph, uh, we continue to, uh, update every time the data changes. We do a new graph that charts from the beginning of the pandemic through current. And then every Monday, regardless of whether or not the numbers change, we do, uh, a graph that also just shows week to week because now with, uh, well over three hundred and sixty-five data points, the, uh, daily chart is getting a little bit congested. So, uh, we do two different types of charts. Anytime there's a change, we do, uh, a daily chart, uh, and then at a minimum, we also do a weekly chart on Mondays. Looking at our positivity, uh, I'm pleased to report that, uh, for the first time in a month, our positivity is finally lower than that of the state. We were down to two point zero six percent on Thursday and the state was at two point three six percent. Uh, and we are ten weeks in the yellow. So that is a good trend for us to continue. Because if you look at the map of the Commonwealth, as of last week, they were up to fifty-five communities in the red, which was up from thirty-two the previous week and twenty the week before that. And last week, uh, when the weekly data was reported, uh, some of those new communities that went into the red included Framingham, Southborough, and Milford. Uh, we do continue to watch that surge that's taking place on the Cape. Uh, and I saw a piece recently that suggested that Massachusetts is now the number one in the nation for cases of the P one variant. Uh, that would be the one that is associated first identified in Brazil. So we've got some concerns about the fact that that is very prevalent down the Cape especially. Uh, in terms of our positivity, we continue to, uh, see, uh, this is what's referred to in some circles as the fourth surge. And as we know, cases are a precursor to, next slide, which shows hospitalizations, which we also continue to see, uh, a surge in hospitalizations. That is a late indicator. Uh, and then, as of today, uh, two new groups were eligible to sign up for appointments for the vaccine, which include people who are in the fifty-five to fifty-nine age range and individuals with one, uh, specific medical condition. And last week, the Commonwealth changed its list of medical conditions in accordance with updates made by the CDC. So once again, we would encourage people, if they haven't already, to go and pre-register so that when there is a slot available to them, they will be contacted by mail, by, or by email, by phone, or by text message, and they will have twenty-four hours to respond to that communication from the Commonwealth if they're on the waiting list. Then in terms of vaccines, continue to report good news. Um, currently, we have twenty-one point one percent of our community that is fully vaccinated, thirty-nine point four seven percent at least partially vaccinated, which includes ninety percent of the individual sixty-five to seventy-four, and ninety-eight percent of the individual seventy-five and older. So we have done a really good job in previous weeks of making sure that our most vulnerable populations, uh, have received the vaccination. And with that, I will pause and see if there are any questions.
Thank you. Sparrow?
Uh, I don't have any today.
It is time.
I have no questions today.
Uh, regarding the, uh, the question I have, uh, chief, and you, you spotted it earlier as the, uh, the trend of the variant on the Cape, how do we monitor that? Earlier, you told us the CDC is not giving details on the type of cases that are, uh, emerging in communities, is that correct?
Uh, Mass DPH is not making individual notifications to communities with the B one one seven, that's the UK variant, because of the large number of cases of the UK variant. They are still making notifications to individual communities of the P one variant because there are fewer of those, uh, and it's easier for them to, to track those specific communities.
And for individuals that are being vaccinated, is there any evidence that, uh, they are susceptible to that variant?
It depends on which, uh, vaccine they receive. Some, uh, have proven to be more effective against the different variants. Uh, it, it depends on the manufacturer. All of them have shown, been shown to have some efficacy, some are more effective than others.
Very well. Are there any questions, uh, from folks assembled on our Zoom call this evening relative to the coronavirus community update? Hearing none, we'll move on to the CARES Act programmatic update.
Great, thank you. Uh, there were, uh, eleven additional expenses posted to me since last week for a total to date of seven hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine. This is the graphical format, and then the next one is the pie chart. Uh, and again, we're publishing the pie chart on a weekly basis on our weekly report that's put out on Thursday evenings as well, with the analysis of the weekly data that comes out from DPH. And then there are no requests for CARES funding this week. And we continue to await guidance from Treasury and ANF. Uh, and as soon as I know something.
Any minute now.
It will, uh, be blowing up your email box.
I noticed earlier on our Zoom call, we had Linda Marshall from our senior center on. Uh, good evening, Linda, I wasn't sure if you wanted to add anything relative to the Council on Aging's efforts to support our, our elderly community, uh, during the, uh, the community, excuse me, during the COVID, um, response. And I also note that today is, uh, the new director's first day. So do you want to give us a brief update here under, uh, the CARES Act update?
I'm sure, with our volunteers, they've done an amazing job helping people get the vaccine evidenced by the numbers that we have. Um, we still have a very small number that we're working with because they're willing to only go a very limited number of locations, um, but that number is very small, I think just two or three right now. So we will continue to assist anyone that reaches out to us. There's more people, we've had a few non-seniors reach out to us, more looking for information on how to, um, and we provide people with whatever information we can to be helpful to them. Um, our new director did start this morning, um, so things went well. Um, she's got a lot of things to catch up on, but she's going to do a great job for Holliston, I'm sure of that.
That's Lee Spricetta.
That is.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you for the update, Linda. Um, do we have any questions from the select board on the community, excuse me, the CARES Act programmatic update? Hearing none. That is all, chief, thanks for your update this week, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to warrants, Mr. Sparrow.
Uh, we have one warrant. I will make a motion to approve the warrant in the amount of two million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Of that, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and six dollars and twenty-one cents is town payroll.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Carrie's public comment, Mr. Sparrow?
I do not have anything this evening.
It is time.
I have, um, one public comment, I, well, so my question, uh, John, would be, do you want an update from TAC because we met last Thursday?
Sure.
Now or under other business?
Public comment, fine.
All right, so we met Thursday, April first, on a Zoom meeting open to the public. Um, and there were four motions that came out of that meeting that I'd like to share with the, with the board. Some have already been mentioned and one, I think we've already taken care of, nice job tonight, gentlemen. Uh, one motion was to recommend a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion to the board for South Street. So I think we've taken care of that tonight. Um, a second one was to, uh, and these are coming, Travis, I think you said towards the end of April, you'll, um, present to the board the mo- the recommendations for the board's consideration?
I had that under other business, yes.
Oh, you did? All right, well, then I'm going to take this one on.
No, 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 keep going.
Okay, all right, so then, uh, there was a motion from the Traffic Advisory Committee to mount and pay for a twenty-five mile per hour sign on Bullard Street, replacing what was a thirty mile an hour sign. And to be honest, after seeing the speed data from Bullard.
Can get it up fast.
Well, they can get the speed up fast enough, but the sign needs to go first. So, um, the second, third rather, was a motion for, um, a green sign board that designates the truck route on Washington Street, designates it down towards, west towards four ninety-five. That was a motion, uh, that was made to recommend that to the select board. And the fourth and final was to recommend that the select board approve mounting and paying for a deaf child sign, um, on Union Street. And the pay for piece on the two signs that I've mentioned are coming out of the article from town meeting, which is why it's coming to our board and not being paid for out of the highways budget.
Travis, do we want, do we need these under an agenda item and I wanted to approve them?
So I, I guess part of the question, and I did hop on the TAC call as well, um, is a little bit procedural when it comes to the fact that TAC is relatively new. So the warrant article was a TAC request that was put on the warrant through the select board, um, and it had within it about forty-five hundred dollars for signs, um, the, the offices of, the, the, the sign budget within DPW is, uh, specific to replacing broken and worn signs, right? And, and what TAC is, is answering is questions that come from the public to put signs up. So within, uh, the article of December fifth, our meeting was, uh, forty-five hundred dollar amount based on a hundred fifty dollars per sign for thirty signs. That was in there, it was, it was written in the description. Part of the question that came through the TAC, with the discussion of TAC was theoretically that money was approved for TAC to spend to answer these questions. At the same point, should the select board be authorizing the TAC to use those monies, right? So if the answer is yes, we think that, that the select board should be authorizing any of those through TAC, then I can certainly put this on an upcoming agenda and we can sort of, uh, do it that way. Um, I would probably put it under, quite frankly, as this goes ahead for business, it would just be a, a normal course of business we put under for business.
Any opinion on that, Ben?
Uh, I think my only opinion is I just, I, I'd like to just have a process and then we just follow it. I don't, I don't, if it's on and it's in, in other business, that's fine. But I'd like to kind of have like, okay, TAC has to do this and then we do this and then that's just the way it is. I'd, I'd like to keep it pretty straightforward and clean so it's easy to understand.
Tina, do you have an opinion?
I agree with Ben and I agree with Travis, I think bringing it up as an agenda item under board business makes sense.
I'll put this on next week for business, we'll approve those two sign requests or not, uh, the select board can choose to do that. Um, as it related to the, the sign on Bullard, um, is that, that would also be under the article?
Yeah. Yes. Yes, yes. Um, and so related to that, Travis, perhaps under other business, we ought to talk about, um, signage that would be needed if and when the seven roads worth of truck exclusions are approved. Because that will be quite a, quite a significant amount of signage, all things considered. Um, not, and I don't think in terms of numbers, but it's not zero. So, um, how, how do those get paid for? We know it's many months down the road because that's how long this process takes, but it might be worth having that conversation so we can come back to that maybe under other business. Um, and that, that's really all I have for public comments, so thank you.
I have nothing for public comment. Does anybody on the Zoom call this evening have any comments to make? Hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the town administrator.
Okay, so number one was going to be that Lisa Porchetta, I believe, started, uh, to pronounce it, I should ask her, I, I just call her Lisa, but she started today. Uh, as we saw, Linda is still, uh, helping us, she will be available to Lisa, um, as she gets her feet under her, um, we worked out, uh, sort of consultant role, uh, that Linda will continue to play for Lisa's benefit. Um, but welcome to town, Lisa, and, uh, we'll, we'll get her introduced to the department heads, uh, as early as this Wednesday. Um, but, uh, you know, more to come as Lisa, uh, is, is going to be talking about opening up the, the Council on Aging at some point in the, in the future and meeting people, um, anything that she, you know, is looking forward to, to push out there for, um, for activities, uh, I will be sure to bring to this board as well. The next thing I just wanted to mention, I've been in, uh, contact quite frequently in the last couple of weeks with, uh, Beth Greenblatt, uh, and Rennie Friedman as it relates to the solar project of Marshall Street. Uh, they, we are in a, uh, hurry up and wait sort of, uh, pattern as it relates to the same information they presented to you that they need from Eversource, sort of the, the code that they'll be under, which will dictate quite a few things. Still don't have that information. At the same time, they're looking to sort of get everything else out of the way that they need to. So, um, most recently, I had a conversation, uh, with Rennie and, uh, Karen Sherman for the planning board, Mark Capeline, uh, on zoning, Ryan Clapp for Concom, they'll be going in front of Concom and then the planning board in the coming weeks, make sure they get all of that situated. Um, and, um, that, uh, Beth has also worked with our council, uh, MTC, actually MEAT of Meat, Dalluminacotta, um, does most of the conjure work, so Beth has gotten, um, most of that to the point where when we're ready to sign, uh, you can be sure that the, the background work on that has been done. So a lot of that getting done while we also hurry up and wait, as I said, on Eversource. Uh, additionally, one other.
Quick question, uh, do you think any, um, assistance from, uh, our state rep or a state senator with Eversource would be a lever to, uh, consider, i.e. a letter from either of them?
Uh, I will pose that question to Beth.
Thank you.
Uh, absolutely. Uh, additionally, a memo, uh, for upcoming roadway construction, um, did go out to begin the week of April twelfth, Marshall Street, Hanlon Road, Prentice Street, Cheryl Lane, and Cedar Street. Um, that information will be pushed through the normal channels, um, but we are getting into the spring where, uh, we do, um, construction projects that we've timed. So that came out from DPW, just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Additionally, uh, and I'll get into this, um, under number eight on our agenda tonight under the town meeting warrant, but for next week, uh, we will be posting a public hearing. One of the items on, um, our warrant that has progressed through the planning board is a road acceptance for Summit Point Drive. Summit Point is one word, uh, for anybody unfamiliar with Summit Point Drive. And, uh, the select board needs to have a public hearing ahead of time. Um, we are unable to do it, uh, by a hiccup of the calendar. If we were to do it at, at the meeting of Tuesday, the twentieth, because Monday, the nineteenth is a holiday, we would then not have twenty-one days ahead of town meeting, we would be at twenty days. If we can't do it on the twentieth, we'll do it on the twelfth. Uh, that will be on our agenda next week, a public hearing on the road acceptance of Summit Point Drive, everything is in order, um, and the upholders will be notified. Uh, that's also been, uh, will be put in the paper, uh, as we will notice as, as required. And that's all I have under the comments from the town administrator.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the Zoom call for our town administrator? Hearing none, we'll move on to open appointed seats on boards and committees. We have a note here from the town clerk dated Thursday, March twenty-fifth, that there are several vacancies, um, existing on commissions, uh, councils and so forth, uh, within our town. These are appointed positions, correct, Mr. Hearn?
Yes, so I'll actually, I'll pull it up if you don't mind?
Yep, please go ahead, I have it up right now, but if you'd like to recite it, go right ahead.
So I did send this to, uh, the good folks at Holliston Reporter, and when they cover our meeting, uh, tomorrow, the select board meeting tomorrow, they'll have to, uh, show a screen of their own, um, screen. This is, uh, what they ran, I believe it was on Sunday, as part of their Civic Sunday, um, Sunday postings. Uh, these are the list of items that the select board appoints seats to, and we are looking for at any point, anybody to sort of raise their hand, bring themselves forward, send their qualifications to my attention. Um, we, the Community Preservation Committee is one where I have received some interest, although again, any of these, um, will, will sort of look for, uh, a period. Um, one, one of the items that I think it's, it's relevant and, and a reason to run it now in the Holliston Reporter and, and to speak about it now on our agenda as, as a, uh, agenda item, is that obviously people are looking at positions, um, to run for elected seats, but we also have a number of appointed seats that I think, you know, we're, we're at all times looking for anybody, um, we, we rely heavily in this town on volunteers, uh, and these seats are, are, you know, we have a wide variety of options depending on sort of your, uh, your interests. Um, we do have multiple seats on the Economic Development Committee, I mentioned that previously, um, and, and still looking for applicants there. Uh, the Community Preservation Committee, uh, has a, a slightly separate process, although again, um, uh, an appointment from the select board onto that, Community Farm. Uh the Community Preservation Committee uh has a slightly separate process, although again, um an appointment from the Select Board onto that, Community Farm Agricultural Commission, uh the Cultural Council, the Historical Commission, which currently lacks a quorum, the Open Space Committee, and then under Sustainable Ways to Recycling, this is a conversation the Select Board had previously on potentially um repurposing that group, um and so we can have that conversation. But at this point, these are the ones that the Select Board appoints to and have open seats that we would be looking for anybody to send their qualifications through my office um that I could bring forth to the board in the future.
Thanks, Travis. Any questions on that?
No.
Tina, you good?
Uh no. I smile to myself that we have to wait for the resumes to come in. We can't just go out and grab people and say, you'd be great on this committee, which is leading allow us to appoint you, but um I think that's great information to share. Thank you.
If their application comes through to me and somebody ha- had had kicked them to toward in my direction, that's perfectly fine. I just need them to come through me.
Let's move on to the FY twenty-two budget versus revenue update portion of our agenda, Travis.
Excellent, okay. So um we have had no changes in the um revenue assumptions we put forward previously. Um I think generally speaking, I'll just give a a very high level overview, you know, we are, we have a model based on um our Prop two and a half tax levy. Um utilizing that, uh the the new growth within FY um uh the tax rate setting in FY twenty-one. Um you know, we we have the opportunity to essentially tack two and a half percent on that into FY twenty-two, which we've done. We sort of put together a revenue uh model that I I believe is is responsible and yet also, you know, goes in in the right direction. We're we're factoring in uh an increase in local receipts of four hundred ten thousand dollars, a bit of a bounce back from uh the pre-COVID numbers that we saw, the decrease that was that was assumed within this fiscal year. Um and then additionally, we built in there uh the the first step in sort of like general fund revenues in relation to the solar project that the Select Board pursued at Marshall Street. So some some good steps. At the same point, we are confined by Prop two and a half, um that limits uh the the tax levy, and we are assuming level state aid until I hear otherwise from the governor, um and and so that's where we are. So we we have a a full budget picture, which I presented um in in the past few weeks. Uh we've had a couple tweaks um that I wanted to go through tonight and would seek votes on on an adjustment to a a few budgets as we gain more information. Um and I've sent that information to the Finance Committee, um so that they're sort of up to date on where we are. Uh there are a couple assumptions where we're not in agreement necessarily with the Finance Committee, um but that is, you know, there are no votes have been taken on on the Finance Committee's side of the budget. The assumptions there that I'm referring to are as it relates to um money into reserves and those types of um items. So I can just put up uh very briefly, you know, the the and the picture will be um the same as it was uh the last time we looked at it. This is the uh revenue picture. Um a couple changes have been made. Um at the moment, uh the property tax levy, as I said, all all the revenue is is sort of where we were. The four hundred ten thousand dollars I referred to in local receipts includes the hundred fifty thousand dollar per um solar. These are the budgets that have um adjustments that we've made. Um this is a new number from Key Tech, although I believe I presented it last week. And then uh one point eight five million dollars um is the uh bottom line assumption that I have in there. Um and you know, the conversation has been whether or not that that number can increase. The FinCom model is higher, as I mentioned. Um but right now, this is where we are, all things considered. Um as I presented to you, uh this is sort of the roll-up of all of those budgets, FY twenty-one compared to twenty-two. Um and that just rolls up into this model right here, which I think is a cleaner view.
Can I uh ask just, do you have questions, John?
Uh yes, well, we'll start with Ben, as it were you.
Yeah, okay, you're right.
What he's done, but uh keep going, Travis.
Um so that's really the only revenue component I was gonna mention, if that's the que- if the question is around revenue.
We'll start with you, Ben. Any questions?
I do not have any questions about revenue.
Guess what, Tina?
(laughing)
You're up!
So how do you stick your foot in there? Uh so in terms of revenue there with local receipts, you have four hundred ten thousand, that's a thirteen percent increase from last year. That's based on solar.
Um there's a couple line items that were dropped in FY twenty-one due to COVID that um has sort of proven that that they will bounce back, so we brought them back to pre-COVID levels. Fees, for example, um from a bottom line, there are a couple revenue sources that we have seen impacted by COVID, but they have been um as a bottom line for local receipts, the reason I'm bringing it back, I would recommend bringing it back, excuse me, to pre-COVID levels, is that um other revenue sources such as um the fees through the Building Department have completely offset the decline elsewhere, um or slight declines elsewhere.
I'm just, I'm asking, because I know that with ARPA, there there may be the opportunity to fill revenue holes with the whatever comes to the town of Holliston by way of ARPA. Um and I didn't know if that was something that you were gonna explore later when more information is known under local receipts. If that number might bump up as a result of what we come to know um about ARPA and how we can use it.
Um I I think we certainly will continue, uh as the chief mentioned earlier, as we get more information, continue to have that. I would not, under local receipts, probably look at any um increase as it relates to that. As I said, from a bottom line standpoint, where we've seen dips, um they have been offset by increases in in activity through the Building Department as a as an example. Um where I do see the opportunity in a couple instances, um as it relates to lost revenue that we've discussed, uh I would point to the Recreation Department that runs a number of factors that all sort of don't necessarily appear in this picture because they're supported through a revolving fund.
Yeah.
Yet that revolving fund balance has decreased as an impact of COVID, that we could look to ARPA to essentially uh make that that um funding mechanism whole that would um benefit the town for years to come, because if they can continue to run uh at least a significant portion of their operations out of the revolving fund, then that means it doesn't require tax dollars, kind of thing. Um that ARPA may be just an example there. There are significant, there are other examples on the school side for for revolving funds. Extended Data is an example where we could look to do similar things. In terms of the local receipts number and ARPA, I'm not, I don't at the moment see a connection. Um and then the only other point I would make on ARPA specifically is that the way that it currently looks is that the the timeframe on that will go through twenty twenty-four. And so whereas we do not currently project a revenue hole in local receipts, and we're actually bringing it back to pre-COVID letter, uh numbers, I don't know that I would look to put that in the twenty-two budget as we currently see.
Okay, thank you.
You good?
Yes.
Travis, uh revisit the um the item that you have highlighted in blue on your screen, the tax-supported articles. Believe that one point eight five is also commonly called CapEx, is that correct?
That's the most common use. Um we do have a few tax-supported articles um that are not that number.
For purposes of discussion, let's just call it the one point eight five, the CapEx. Now, your footnote indicates the FinCom model is two point three. Um there's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar variance. Um if they're at two point three and you're at one point eight, isn't it more than three fifty?
Um based on the the most recent tweaks right now, there's there's this sort of uh surplus at the bottom based on this particular model that if you would net out where we are, the difference between two point three and one point eight five with that hundred thousand, that's how you come at three fifty.
And-
Because I I would increase, i- if we do have any favorability when when, you know, we sort of get to the end of this process. I I think there is um because of a number of reasons and and a number of conversations I think we need to have about the CapEx fund and how it can work better for Holliston. Um I would be interested in in increasing that one point eight five if we're able to. Um at the end of the day, the one point eight five to me is the bottom line that we need as capacity, um and and would be dangerous to go below in FY twenty-two. Um but at the same point, is from my opinion, um sort of the the number that I'm comfortable um facing the model off of.
You arrived at that number as a result of some kind of average, correct?
Um it is, it is a um maintaining the capacity that we're gonna need now that all of our um the borrowing uh from the levy has now been um matured. Uh that we're we're going to need to start to plan capital within the budget, um while we also are aware of items such as the high school SOI that is being uh put forth to the state that will most likely be a sizable um request in the future, once that moves forward as a um debt exclusion. That we're going to need to probably handle the majority of the capital outside of that project within the levy. Um that to lower this to low one point eight five would be dangerous, in my opinion.
Right, but the point, the the question I have is, you got to the one point eight five by some other reasonable approach, what was that?
Um so one of the items as it relates specifically to CapEx is not necessarily the number that goes in, but the net impact of CapEx as we re- as we look at um the warrants over time. So uh when we get our free cash number, um generally in the fall, we put money into CapEx. When we look at the uh May town meeting, where we're also looking at offsetting the capital that we're we're um approving as much as possible. So as of right now, the 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 draft capital list that we have is about six hundred thousand dollars. Um in this one point eight five, if you remove what we have for for tax-supported articles, you come to about one point six million that could go into CapEx. With six hundred thousand being used in capital, you're looking at increasing the actual balance of the CapEx fund by a net of about a million dollars. Um as you model that with, as I said, i- i- potentially interfacing with future debt loads and those types of things, um I think that that is a reasonable um impact to make in the FY twenty-two budget, and that's the warrant for F- for May town meeting is set up. Um and so it it is, it's more in my mind, looking at the number is what is the net impact of CapEx and not what is the flat amount going in, because that's sort of, that's not the question to ask.
Right. But about a week or two ago, you put a, put up a screen that showed where we're at with certain financial benchmarks. And our financial guidelines, uh which the Finance Committee is a co-signer of, and they signed off on, you indicated that with this proposed revenue picture and expenditure picture to boot, we're within or exceeding, in other words, we're very favorable to all those guidelines. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Last question. When we um, when the, when the warrant is prepared and the omnibus budget is placed in it, whose budget um is placed into the warrant for votes by the Finance Committee? Who's, like, what document is is the control document? Is it the Town Administrator's document, or is it the Finance Committee's document?
We have a document, uh right now, I have a version that ties, um I sat down with Sharon and Mary Boskett, and we have a version of the the warrant, excuse me, of the omnibus budget, um that rolls up to what I just showed on the screen. Um and none of these budgets, none of the recommendations on any of these budgets have yet been voted by the Finance Committee.
Understood.
Um and so uh historically, the conversations and the way that the budget, at least in the past five years, the way that the budgets have been voted by the Finance Committee have been then put on the sheets um within, you know, that Sharon has controlled over the last five years, that I've been working with Sharon on, um and then that is printed as the omnibus budget in the warrant. Um I think that answers your question.
So when it comes time to assess what right now appears to be a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar variance, the Finance Committee will have some decisions to make against certain line items that the Select Board, among others, have put forth spending that uh they may not agree with. Is that correct?
Potentially.
So in other words, right now, we've got a favorability of about a hundred thousand dollars. We're balanced. All our priorities, at least to the extent that we may make some votes tonight to amend them, have been addressed. Um the Finance Committee Chair has made it clear that he wants this board to deliver priorities to his committee. I ask you, why should we deliver priorities if we are effectively balanced? What's the point?
Yeah, I I think uh-
I I I'm looking for a way out of here. I mean, if there's priorities that this board has to send forth to balance, I understand. But if we are balanced between revenue and expenditure, and the only thing that seems to be in question is this CapEx number and whether or not we put extra money into a savings account that already has uh, you know, a a level that meet or exceeds our guidelines, that's a question I think town meeting has to answer. But where where is the Finance Committee seeing the difference between what we are trying to prepare through you uh on behalf of the town and what they're trying to achieve through their recommendations? Where's the disconnect?
It's in modeling of of um where where people desire the balance of that fund to be, I would say.
Okay, well, I'm very curious to learn what the Finance Committee desires of this board with respect to priorities. So perhaps you can ask them tomorrow night why priorities are necessary, if in fact we have, what appears to me, unless my colleagues disagree, a balanced budget with a favorability upon it.
Uh, well-
Ben, Tina, wait if you like. Any questions?
Um I think, you know, I think the only thing I would say about the, you know, the capital, I've had certainly had some of these conversations about uh the capital fund, um and I'm I I'm glad to see that we have what we're proposing for create the balanced budget. Um I think the thing I would be curious about, I mean, you know, you talked about the net impact of of capital, which I think is is certainly important, but also thinking about it in terms of like a five-year, you know, we're talking about like a five-year plan at least, and as we start putting together, you know, capital, um the the capital expenditures that we need to have, and if we have uh some big ticket items that could be down the road that could seriously impact things. I guess the question would be, does it make sense to plan for, for, to plan ahead for those things within each budget? Let's just say, let's take, take as a hypothetical, one of the warrant articles we're gonna talk about is a DPW facility, which we all, we all know would probably be north of ten million dollars, but let's just pretend it's at ten million dollars, just for argument's sake here. And if we do a twenty-year bond, you know, we can go through whatever that looks like. If, but let's just say we needed to create some favorability, say, three or four years down the road. Does it make sense to create a um a plan to get there within the next few budgets, say, raising a hundred thousand dollars in each additional budget to sort of get to a point where there is that favorability within the budget? Or does it make sense to just sort of wait until that happens and then add the money in? I don't know what the right way to think about it is, if it's, if it's, you know, if it's like, you know, you're 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 saving up for a house, and you're trying to, you're trying to make sure that you have enough money to pay your mortgage. Does it make sense to just make sure you're saving all that money each month until you get the mortgage? Or does it make sense to just sort of wait until that happens and then suddenly put the money aside for it?
Yeah, I I I think there's a couple things, and I think we showed it last week, and I can pull that up again. I didn't put it in this because the the information hasn't changed, but you know, wh- where we are with the balances in the funds, um you're right. I mean, the the roadmap, the the current policy, um or the the current parameters don't necessarily meet um where we are as a town, right? And so I think part of it is, you know, I certainly understand why my model does not look like the Finance Committee model, right? There there is a different expectation of of where that needs to go. My, I think what we need to sit down and talk about is where the guiding document for that fund should go. And there's a couple things that I think the conversation, you know, my intention is to start that through the Capital Subcommittee, the Finance Committee, um because I I think, you know, that's a an organic place to start it and and bring it back. But the the general idea that I think makes sense, if we want to continue to increase the balance of that fund, is really if we're going to use the CapEx fund differently than we have been using it as a town. And the way I mean that is to to have the CapEx available to to knock off capital projects so that we don't need to borrow is certainly a viable way to handle a CapEx fund. It's certainly a viable way to to um monitor and and keep under control your debt load, right? That's that's a great way to use a capital expenditure fund. As we get into larger items and as we get into the conversations, um one of the things I think is a reasonable way to look at CapEx is if we have a large debt project that we don't want, the town wants, but thinks, you know, for financial, for quite frankly, the the tax bill reason, right? I don't want my taxes to go up. I I understand the need for this capital project. How do we fit it within Prop two and a half budget so that there's cost certainty in the future? Well, can the CapEx fund be used to essentially offset peak years of debt service of a project, right? That way, by maintaining the ba- um by maintaining the um the capacity within the budget of the one point eight five minimum, two point three in the FinCom's model. By maintaining that, we can then build back in a certain number of debt in the future. And if the debt is above that capacity, as debt declines, you look at the peak years of that debt service, you use the CapEx fund, and this would require changing the nature of the CapEx fund by, you know, an agreement between multiple groups and and the the modeling, as you just mentioned, the plan to how to get there. In that instance, certainly it makes sense to continue to increase the CapEx balance. In the current model, um I I can't think of a reason, quite frankly, to continue to just build it, um unless we're, that's, you know, those types of things. And I think that that is something that I I think the town, you know, would really serve the town well, would, you know, the the town has put itself in in excellent um position to be able to have that conversation and and be able to look at some some projects that would allow the separation of the high school project can't be done within the levy, it's just not really, it's it just can't be, regardless of how that comes out with MSBA, I I mean, I'm, I can, I can definitively make that statement. Um but the other projects probably can, and that, by doing that and having the ability to have that conversation- And that, by doing that and having the ability to have that conversation, you know, then all of a sudden, it is a much more reasonable thing for somebody sitting in Town Meeting to say, can we afford this? Yes, it's going to be under Prop 2 and 1/2, and this is the model to get us there. And so I, that, that's the way that I look at it. And again, all of that is to say, I consider all of that when I'm, I'm putting together what I think is a reasonable number for FY22. And that doesn't mean that I don't understand that somebody may look at it differently.
But because it's under 2 and 1/2 doesn't mean it won't be borrowed. It could be borrowed.
Yes.
It'd be interesting.
But so, so my, the last, it's a comment about that. I agree with you, but I think we need to, as a community, sort of have this conversation about how that fund needs to work and not just make it a percentage of omnibus. And it might be, and it might be a certain percentage, and it might be put together in a certain way. But I think we really need to sort of figure out what does the fund do? And this has been something that drives me nuts generally is because I feel like we don't have that, and I, I'd like that. I'd like some structure around it to understand what it, how, how we're going to use it and what it is useful for, and putting together a long-term plan for it. And that's been something I've been complaining about for a couple of years, and I usually get people just ignoring me. Anyway, so I, I'd like to, I hope, you know, you know, maybe it's during this cycle, maybe that's, that's the time to do it. Maybe it's after Town Meeting, we can have a bigger conversation with the Finance Committee about something like this. But I think it's, we, we need to have this conversation. I'd like to have it, I'd like to, as a Select Board member, understand structurally how this should work so we can make better decisions within that. And then I think once we have that, I will feel more comfortable. I'd like some structure behind it, and I don't feel like the structure is there. And I like what you're telling me, but I want that codified in some manner.
When you were on the Finance Committee, did they have those conversations?
I asked that question many times, and I never got an answer.
Do you need, do you get any questions?
I do, I have a couple, actually. So I listened to Tuesday night Finance Committee meeting, and I was not compelled to provide priorities based on the conversation that the Finance Committee was having. I heard the question raised about the Select Board providing priorities, but it was, to me, I, I found the context to be in terms of past practice. I didn't hear a unified vote, a voice of seven or a majority of seven saying, you know, that the Select Board needs to provide priorities. I just heard it raised more so as this is what we've done in the past and where are they with their list of priorities? So I just wanted to put that out because I was on for the two, two or so hour meeting. And again, I didn't come away compelled that the Select Board was being asked to provide priorities. So if that's, if I'm misunderstanding, that's something that they're going to need to clarify, I think.
No, do you mind if I just?
No, sure.
So, I mean, my, my response to that was, you know, I, I think, I, I just wanted to make sure I understand, right? I, I think, um, a list of priorities, I just, I think the pushback that I had was just, I don't like that, that idea, right? That, that we're putting together, here's, here's these things itemized, right? A number of them are sort of, I mean, a package and those types of things. But at the same point, I think through some changes, and, and actually, we need to take votes on, on a couple of things, and we'll get into actual specific budgets, although I know there's a hand up for discussion probably on this topic. You know, my point to that was not, was simply, I don't like that model of here is an itemized list, but I think that through making decisions, as this pro, this process has, has gone on, you know, those priorities have been established. And, and as we get to some, some final changes to a couple of budgets, you know, I, I think that that is essentially setting up what, what the priorities of the board are.
I agree with you, Travis. All right, so then coming back to what you have here is tax-supported articles, 1.85 million. I think you mentioned it, I just want to come back to that. The treasurer and the accountant, they can certainly speak for themselves, but in terms of how you interpret those conversations, they've reviewed the 1.85 million and they support the 1.85 million in there for the tax-supported articles as an amount?
Yes, they, they feel strongly that the money, money is better put aside into the general stabilization than the CapEx fund for a number of reasons that have specifically to do with conversations with S and P.
Okay.
I think, uh, in a, in a, if you look at it simply through the, the lens of making S and P happy, I can see where that, that, where they're coming from on that. At the same point, um, my point to that would be, I think if we make some reasonable changes, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and everybody sort of understands, you know, we've, we've got to a good place with CapEx, but if we make a couple tweaks, this could really work for the town for the next 20 years, and we could come up with a really great plan here, that I don't know that I would necessarily agree with them that general stabilization is a better spot, other than a specific piece of feedback that they got from S and P, which is, so, and this is minutia, but let me just state it.
Get it out.
The general stabilization fund falls in your unassigned fund balance, and from a purpose of S and P sitting there looking at it, that is a benchmark that they want to see, that your unassigned fund balance is the number. It just happens to be that the, the general stabilization fund falls in the bucket of unassigned fund balance. The CapEx fund, because it has a purpose of capital specifically, falls into a bucket of assigned fund balance, and their, their thinking there is, is, you know, the feedback that it is to increase your unassigned fund balance. And that's fine, but again, if, if, if what we pitch to S and P in the, in the coming months is, you know, we've sat down in the town and talked about this, and, and this is why we think the CapEx fund is the right vehicle, I don't really have a problem personally, but I understand their feedback, and I just want to, you know, make sure that that's out there.
But they, they're in support of the 1.85 million that you have here?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of the way in which you came to 1.85 million, DLS, DOR, MMA, these are, these are organizations at the state level that would support also the, the approach that you've taken to get to 1.85 million. You're not making this up on your own. This is not the Travis Ahern way of determining what the tax-supported article amount should be. This is a, a best practice approach to get to the 1.85 million?
Yes, as I mentioned, I would certainly be, if, if we were able, if there were things that were coming down in costs and we were being able to increase it above, I'd be perfectly comfortable increasing it above 1.85. 1.85, as I said, is, is a number that I, I feel comfortable at.
Okay. And then last question, you, you were talking about a CapEx debt model that you want to see moving forward. Was that in place for you when you started, or is this something that you're, you're sort of creating, not creating, but, um?
No, my.
Proposing on?
My intent for that would be, the way that the CapEx fund is currently situated makes a lot of sense in the, in the specific instance of paying for a capital project with cash rather than borrowing, saving on interest, et cetera. But that the fund itself, especially with how well the town has done with it, could work better for the town if, if it was allowed to interface with borrowings to allow us to, to tick off peak debt service. And that, um, a number of things could be fixed in modeling out capital projects if that were an adjustment that were made. And I think to the, the same point on S and P, I think it works very well with what they'd want to see. And it's something that, quite frankly, I just want to make sure, you know, I, to Ben's point, put in writing, go through, make sure, and then once, the idea is sort of, um, ready to be codified, that we all sit down and have that conversation. But it's also, you know, it's part of my thinking as I look at where we are and why it's important that we maintain at least the 1.85.
Got it. All right, thank you. I'll miss that, John.
Thank you. At this point, we'll welcome any feedback from folks assembled on the Zoom. Any questions on this matter? See a hand raised? Good evening, Dan Alfred. How are you? Dan, are you there? Hang on a second.
Sorry, he was unmuting me. I'm here now.
We're good. We hear you now. Go ahead.
Great. So you, you'd asked some questions earlier, and I thought I'd maybe try to help out a little bit with that. I absolutely agree with Ben. I mean, I do think that we need some sort of plan for, for the capital fund, for the capital set aside. And I'm, and I apologize, Ben, I must have missed that. I mean, I do think, I, I did think that that was sort of what the Capital Subcommittee was starting to work on as we built a plan. So, you know, if, when you were on the Finance Committee, if I, if I missed that, you know, I, I apologize. But, you know, we, I, I did speak with you guys a, a couple of weeks ago about this, this very thing. Back in, you know, January, February of 2020, pre-COVID is what I'm trying to say, we had in our model a, a capital set aside of, of $2 million. We had grown that over time. That was before any, any articles, you know, so basically around the kind of the 2.3 number probably where we, where we are today. And what the Finance Committee is trying to do is, is trying to, to get back there. Recognize what Travis has done and don't, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not thinking that he's trying to push it down artificially, but certainly. But I'd also say that, you know, there are a lot of big tickets, big things that are out there that we still don't have answers to. And what I would say about the $100,000 or so that, that is showing on his spreadsheet is surplus is, you know, I mean, again, we, we can always sort of show surplus if we want by moving things around. And, and I kind of look at this like the fact that there, the Select Board has a significant number of priorities, long-term priorities for, for significant capital spending. You know, you showed a spreadsheet last year, 100-some-on-million for, for, for water pipes, 27 million for sidewalks, you know, whatever, 15, 20 million for a new DPW facility. And the, the, and then obviously, we have the high school libraries out there, all these things. Finance Committee recognizes that, and what we're, we're trying to sort of help guide the town towards is greater savings so that we have the ability to actually spend these projects, again, hopefully under the, the levy limit. And, you know, I kind of liken this to, you know, right now, we may be able to put together a model that shows that the Select Board can, can fully fund all of its sort of near-term priorities. But I kind of look at that as like a family going on an extra trip to, to Disney World or to, you know, Beach, you know, rather than putting that money into a 529 plan for their kid's college education. And then 10, 15 years down the line, when college rolls around, because they've been on all these great vacations, they have a lot of great memories, but there's no money in the bank to actually pay for the, for, for college for their kids. And so, you know, you, you can show surplus and that, and that's great, but it's, but you're, you're, you're prioritizing spending now versus making sure that you can do the bigger tickets that you want to do longer term. And I think that.
I'm sure it's a great opinion on that because I think at the end of the day, it's a question of choices and fiscal policy, rather than choosing Disneyland over an educational savings account. Those are, those are really awkward analogies. Maybe you can give us a better idea of what you're talking about.
Well, no, I'm talking about near-term spending. So spending on things that you want to do now versus saving and doing things that you want to do, bigger tickets that you want to do longer term. It's, it's actually a perfect analogy, so.
No, it's not, because we are.
Okay, then we'll just disagree with that. But, but.
Hold on a second. Oh, no, 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 hold on a second, hold on. We are saving. We are saving. We're putting money.
Look at what Travis put together. He put together a plan to spend exactly what we need for this year and not plan to ensure that we have the capacity to, actually, he showed a $2.5 million need for, for capital and, and is setting it, capital in, but, and, and article. And we're putting.
I'm not sure that's correct, but keep going, Dan, keep going.
Well, Travis, I mean, you did show a, a spreadsheet with, with one, with 2.5 or so in change, which obviously we also know will, will grow by the time we get to Fall Town Meeting, but.
So are you, you're talking about the capital needs then?
I'm talking about the spreadsheet that you put up with, with capital. I mean, it had a lot of things in it, had some, some Chromebooks, it had some place where we may be able to shave back on some, certain things, but it was a 2.5, you know, million dollar number.
No, I, I, so for May, the capital at the moment, and we haven't got.
This was projected through October.
Yeah. Dan, you cut out, could you repeat that?
This was projected through October.
Oh, oh, with October, right. And so, right, and, and, and you're right, at the same point, you're, you would be assuming that we would not be also have free cash available in the fall and those types of things. No, I, I think that's, that's a fair point.
Right, well, and, and I, I mean, I mean, I, you know, ideally, we, we're not planning for spending and relying on free cash for that spending because essentially, if you're doing that, then you're budgeting free cash into your operating model, essentially, right? I mean.
Capital, capital is not the operating model. So what we're talking about, in this particular May, is putting $1.6 million potentially into the CapEx fund while allocating about just under $600,000 out for a net impact to the CapEx fund of over $1 million into the fund. You're right, though, I, I did want to show everybody that, that I'm aware of, of capital requests that will be coming on the October timeframe that could, could, you're correct, decrease the, the balance if those were all approved in the October timeframe and there were no free cash that were put into CapEx at that time. Although historically, if you look at October, at least in the, the past few years, the, again, just as, you know, this model in May puts more money into CapEx than is, is allocated out, proposed, that also the town has put more free cash into CapEx in the fall than has allocated out of it and actually increased the balance as we did in December.
Right.
So I, I think you're right in, in one sense, that, that everything that I, I've shown for FY22 that I'm aware of from department heads is more than, than this would put into CapEx, but I'm not sure I agree in the, in the big picture of both Town Meetings.
Sure, but, but, you know, we, we don't know what we will need to use for, for free cash, right? One, one year, we, we had a free cash number that was, you know, large enough that we could actually, we, we paid for the traffic lights, right? Without actually having to, to raise the taxpayers' tax rate as, as they had already actually approved. I mean, you know, things, things come up that, that, you know, you, you want the flexibility and the optionality is, is basically what I'm, what I'm getting at. And what you guys have proposed is, is a significant amount of spending and a cutback or at least a maintenance and not a return to the, I want to say savings, because there is a plan to spend it, but the sort of, the, the return to capital set aside that, that the Finance Committee and, and prior Select Boards had, had worked hard on, on, on building up. And so, so that's the discrepancy. And do you, do you, you know, like, I don't want to get, but do you, do you get, you keep everything that you, you want in there over near, over, over making sure that our, you know, our financial position is, is sound? And, and look, this is, this is definitely a, you know, a matter that we, we need to work on, but it, and I, I understand.
Yeah, are you suggesting that the budget that Travis is proposing is unsound?
Okay, John, that's, that's not what I said or not what I'm suggesting, but if you, if you did continue to do this year in, year in and year out, over the long term, you would, you would definitely find yourself with lower reserves, you'd find yourself with a higher budget, you'd find yourself with a higher tax rate, and you would have less flexibility down the road to do the projects that you want. So I would say that that is absolutely true. Travis's budget is sound, it's not going to, it's not going to blow us up, and certainly in any, in any year. I don't think that he's done anything improper with the budget, and I wouldn't certainly claim that. But I would say that what we, we, it is setting aside the bare sort of minimum as he, you know, has stated, and I, I don't think that that's the financially prudent thing to do.
Dan, can I ask a quick question? Because I just want to come back to something you, a comment you made. Oh, I'm sorry.
Of course.
Go ahead, sorry.
So you said that the, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said the Select Board had approved a, a, a lot of big ticket items or a big budget, or you, I think your wording was the Select Board's approved a lot. I'm just looking at the expenditure that Travis has sort of up there. He had it on the screen a minute ago. The budget request that the Select Board in large part approved, it's a 0.3 increase for FY22. So are you talking about capital requests for May? Is the Select Board's approved a lot of, because we haven't heard the capital request yet. We haven't approved anything.
The Select Board budget, or is it all?
Well, I'm looking at budget requests, um, number 01122 through 01692.
I don't know what that means.
I don't either, so.
Those are the, those are the department org codes.
Yeah.
Just all of the, the budgets on the Town side, some of those are not under Select Board. Those are the, the requests that are currently in.
I'm seeing a $31,822 increase or a 0.3 increase from FY21.
Right, so within the, the 21 to 22 change, a number of things that have, have sort of impacted that, the, the one that would fit within that, uh, specific grouping of budgets has been essentially offset by the $790,000 reserve set aside in, in FY21 compared to bringing that back down to the 325 level in FY22. Has offset a number of the increases that Mr. Alfred's referring to in, in budgets as we've sort of come, come back in line after COVID. I think the police would be a great example of, you know, FY21's budget was kind of, had to do some tap dancing to get to 0.
Right.
22 has, has taken a hit because of that. The, the, the increase above what we would normally see in the police budget therefore is sort of being offset by bringing the reserve fund back in line at the $325,000 year line. But at the same point, you know, Mr. Alfred, I think, is pointing out the fact that there are budgets that have gone up more than the general 1 and 1/2 to 2%. And but what Ms. Hine is referencing is the fact that the bottom line of those budget requests through that offset is is pretty modest.
Well, sure, but I mean, you've got a new police officer, we're expanding paper fire first, and I'm not necessarily saying I disagree with all these that, you know, on a on a fundamental basis, just like when the school committee comes to us and says, we need, you know, you know, X, Y, and Z items, they all on their face make a lot of sense and that we need. It it's just that at the end of the day, you know, we we have limited limited dollars and then there are significant, you know, articles that are being put forward and spending in in those articles that, you know, also, you know, have a lot of costs. And I realize that this like word has pushed some of the things off and then that and you know, appreciative of that. But, you know, we are still in in a, you know, you know, a difficult financial period. So do we need a new police officer? I'm, you know, I'm I'm not saying yes or no, but that that that's my point. And so so you don't, and one thing I would say, Tina, is that, well, we may not have taken a a vote on it per se, the the Finance Committee was 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 quite sort of united in in our front and that we would like some some sort of guidance from from this like board on what they view as their 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 chief priorities. Though in conversations I've had with other people, I I've I've heard that, you know, instead of asking you specifically for priorities, we come to you and say, we need you to come, you know, find some sort of some number of dollars, you know, to either cut or or something like that. I mean, is that is that an approach that you would prefer? I mean, I don't, to me, I guess it's it's six on one hand, half dozen on the other, but
To me, that's a mute point.
I don't understand what you just said, Dan, if you could repeat that, that
Well, rather than rather than coming with down with a list of, you know, one through ten, right, your number one priority through your number ten priority of of spending, would you like the Finance Committee come back to you and say, you know, we need you to cut a hundred thousand dollars out of the budgets that you oversee?
No, not if I'm looking at a ninety eight thousand dollar surplus, man, I wouldn't be
Forget the ninety eight thousand dollars, forget the ninety eight thousand dollars, it's one look.
I think what we learned tonight is that the budget that you folks will be voting against will be the budget that the select board and the town administrator prepare for you to look at. So in other words, you may just have to vote no on certain budgets that you don't support the increases on.
That's factually incorrect. The the budget that is, the budget that goes to town meeting currently is the Finance Committee recommended budget.
I think we have a disagreement on that, don't we, Travis? Earlier, you told me it was the town administrator's budget that gets populated by the town accountant into the municipal system that becomes the omnibus. In the past five years that has been impacted, the direction for that has been from the Finance Committee.
It was, it was before that.
Past five years are an anomaly, but if we go by the special act and what is described under the special act that created your position, the the budget, I understand, is created by the town administrator.
It was compiled by the town administrator.
That's correct. And then the Finance Committee votes against that.
So this was the, this is what happened prior to to Jeff as well, this was when Paul was here. I I don't, there there's misconception that everything changed with 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 Jeff and it's just inaccurate.
Gotcha. All right, well, you know what, we'll check with
We'll hash this out, but the state law is is quite clear that the recommendations from the Finance Committee on the budget go to town meeting unless the town adopts the bylaw that states that it should be the select board.
Understood. I actually was on the Finance Committee at a time when we did make our recommendations against the town administrator's budget, but that was probably a different time. Ben, did you have some questions?
I just have one quick question. Dan, thank you for the for the comments. Always good to hear from you. But I did want to just ask, you know, you're talking about making sure that this this board has good financial policy and is thinking ahead for the future and and trying to be to to plan. Is having a plan a prudent policy? And that's kind of what I'm asking for and asking to generate for the capital expenditure fund in this particular case. I didn't want to, I want to keep it narrow to that for that particular focus, not get past that, but I think for the capital expenditure fund, I think the purpose and, you know, part of what we were discussing with Travis before was trying to find a way to make a plan that gets us to where we want to be, whether, you know, whether it's two point five million, whether it's two million, whether it's one point five million, I don't know, but I think what we need to do is have a plan together and not just be putting aside money for something. I want it to be put aside and thinking about what it for a purpose. And I feel like it's not, it's, you know, I I I think one of the things that I have concerns about with some of the comments that you made is that you're talking a lot about what might be with respect to capital, not what is with respect to capital. I think we can, I think we should get to a point where we have a little bit more solid footing on what we're talking about. And I think Travis has been putting together a capital plan, a longer term capital plan that's going to get us closer to that, that can incorporate some of the other, the other expenditures that we were talking about. Now, you know, we're not talking about giant sidewalk improvements, we're not talking about huge water infrastructure, those would be incorporated in some capacity, but not on quite on the level that was presented at that time, because I just think that was a, that seemed like an an Excel exercise, not necessarily a policy choice. I think that's the way I interpreted it. So I just think we need to be working towards a policy and a process and thinking about what is prudent here and not just doing it for the sake of doing it. That's that's all I want to say.
In other words, a collaborative approach to budgeting, in this case, capital budgeting, rather than one person's idea.
Well, yes, I mean, that that's that can be in the extension of it, yes, a greater collaborative approach.
I I wouldn't, I don't disagree with 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 Ben on that. I would I would only simply say that we we know that the spending is large. I mean, you know, I don't know what the total number is, but I know it's more than than one point five. And that's why we've been trying to to increase it, because we know that the spending needs is significant.
Right, I will tell you, my impression is that the town has been putting way too much money into those kind of funds and misdirecting them away from operational needs. And it's been a complete lack of investment in the kind of services, and that's operational services, Dan, while the capital budget, the free cash each fall just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. It's gotten to the point where the operational side has suffered tremendously, and I think this board sees an opportunity here to right size things so that we are investing in our operational needs and in the stabilization and other accounts that keep us in great financial shape. Do we have any other, Tina, are you all set tonight? Do you have any comments to make before we move on?
No, I I honestly, I feel great about where we are. I I feel very good about this.
Okay. Dan, I'll give you your last word if you need it, other than that, we'll
If you're gonna give it to me, I'll I'll take it. I would just simply say that I I I recognize that there is definitely investments that we need to 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 make in the town. We're we're definitely trying to work with you on that. There's also tons of investments that needs to be made in the schools. But it was the financial policy that, you know, of the Finance Committee and prior select boards that 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 got us through the the crisis without, you know, having to to lay off anybody, having to reduce hours, you know, being able to afford extra things here and there when we we needed them. So, you know, prudent financial policy serves you really well in a crisis. So thank you very much.
All right, have a great night. Any other questions from the public this evening on the Zoom call?
I actually have to get to the budgets that I was
You have four to go?
I do.
That's right, gotta take a couple of votes.
This can be relatively quick.
All right. Sorry, we're we're all night.
But do we need a comfort break?
Do you need a comfort?
I do not.
Let's keep going.
Okay, all right. So one thing that has changed, I I did have this conversation with the Finance Committee last Tuesday night in in the context of, actually, let me pull this down before people start reading ahead of my where I am with the conversation. So essentially, a couple of things came about since the last time we went through the budgets, the the select board being one of them. The the town clerk's budget does not go through the 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 select board for review because it is an elected position. At the same point, I'm I'm involved in the hiring of of processes and those types of things, so I try to keep you up to date. The town clerk presented a budget to the Finance Committee, there was a personnel change, and there was a desire to potentially redevelop that position before it's reposted. I wanted to make sure that the Finance Committee was sort of on board with with some changes as there would be a financial impact to to this in future fiscal years. So I brought that conversation to the Finance Committee last Tuesday. They were very receptive and and supportive of, generally speaking, you know, some of the the operational changes and and the cost behind those as it relates to the clerk's office. And so let me actually, I I pulled up one sheet, but let me do, I had put together an org chart to show the thing on where I was thinking. I know that you have, obviously, as a board, been aware of this conversation as well, but it was the first time that they had a chance to sort of see the conversation. So this is in here, changes that have happened within this fiscal year. It's been obviously my first year, and so it's been a little busy. One of the things that we made a priority going into December was the position in red orange that says HR benefit specialist, HR one. That was a position that Mary Buscat and I had talked about at great length, about specifically drawing out within the treasure collector's office, which handles the benefits and 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 pretty much all of the HR functions that don't come through my office. And so to make sure that we had that position well defined, people within internally know where to go when they have a benefits question and those types of things. The position moved from what was a benefits clerk to the HR benefit specialist position on the same general line of the assistant treasurer and assistant collector. That position, she's been on board with us for quite a while, is working very well. We're very happy with her and and Mary and I are happy with that decision. At the same point, as I'll talk about in a second, you know, what I see in the long term in terms of succession planning with with Mary Buscat, who I'm I'm going to hold on to as tightly as I can, but I won't be able to hold forever. You know, we really need what is, what would be the the sort of future HR function within town, and I'll get to that in a second. But in blue, there's a conversation that came about rather organically through the town clerk's office with a a position vacancy. The position is a non, was a non benefitted position at eighteen hours, something that, you know, is not specific to Holliston, it's it's prevalent in municipal government that we do. If somebody has a a position under twenty hours, you know, the the overhead costs that the town has are are less. One of the concerns about increasing hours for that reason is that there's a cost to the town, and that was one of the reasons I wanted to have the conversation with the Finance Committee last week. Liz is essentially, the the town clerk is essentially asked for more hours in that position, and one of the thoughts that has come up is that, you know, generally speaking, the the overview of the the types of calls that come into town hall, if you don't know where you're going, you're generally going to start with either the town administrator's office, select board office, which is a joint office, or the town clerk. And we we receive a lot of the same general questions. You need different sort of perspectives on each, but to be able to sort of take a lot of the the upfront workload from the end user, the resident, is relatively similar. So I started to look at whether or not that could, her request could work with what has been a change in in my office since I, before I came on board. It doesn't necessarily make sense in this model, as you look to the left of the screen under the town administrator, because it really would add clerical support that that under this model we have. But what where it does make sense is if I move up into the FY twenty two model, and this is what I discussed with the Finance Committee last week, was changing the model under the town administrator's office to have the one dedicated full time person, which becomes the office manager in the office, and then the previous administrative assistant role, which has been not filled for a little while and and will be vacant, become, then essentially becomes, by not increasing headcount, but reorganizing that office, the ability to create what is, again, for a number of reasons, been my priority, to the question previously on priority, this is mine. I have identified this, and quite frankly, before I came to town, one of the first conversations I ever had when discussing Holliston was Fernie Lynch on the phone, was, I just looked at this town online, let me tell you, I got a main concern, and it is that there is no HR function that is listed on the website. If you go to benefits, you end up in the treasure collector. That is a model that has been outdated in towns for more than a decade. Now, come to find that you guys had Mary Buscat, so you've been getting along just fine, she's been doing a phenomenal job. I've actually had external confirmation that sort of all of them, all of the documentation, everything that we have up online when it comes to the way that we're handling, you know, paperwork for employees from a compliance standpoint, we are, we comp out very well with any town that has a dedicated HR function, and that, you know, quite frankly, financially has probably made the most sense for the town. So no bone to pick there, but again, when Mary retires at some point in the future, and I continue to tell her, you know, ten years, ten years from now, when she laughs at me, is that the town will not then be able to hire a treasure collector who does benefits and the HR function. We're going to have to hire a treasure collector that does the treasure collector function, and it's hard enough to find those people, quite frankly, because municipal finance positions are very difficult to fill. So that is a long winded way to say that I believe right now, going into twenty two, while there is a cost, which I'll talk about in a second, and I also discussed with the Finance Committee broadly, is to say, if if we were to go with a model change where the assistant town administrator slash HR director becomes what was previously the same sort of headcount individual that was the administrative assistant, we lose support within the town administrator slash select board office as it relates to sort of a number of administrative roles. The office manager, though, could maintain a number of things that are specific to the the select board and the treasurer, excuse me, the town administrator, licensing, dealing with the ABCC as it relates to sort of all the licenses of the alcohol and those types of things. There's there's a laundry list of things that that still need to be done within this office and don't fall under HR, but things like workers' compensation that was previously done by the administrative assistant, which is, you know, probably an expanded role for administrative assistant, and that's how we got by for so long, really could now fall under the HR function, right, a number of those types of items. So in this scenario, with the two things in red, where we now have essentially an HR function within town, but less direct administrative support for the town administrator, and by the way, we've also gotten by it over the past year with some support for part time help in my office, which has been phenomenally, has worked phenomenally well, and and the people that we have there are great, but from a long term planning perspective of why the the town clerk's request may make sense is that if you're increasing that hour to the point where the the position becomes scalable, because you don't have to worry about the arbitrary cap of benefited versus non benefitted, well, can we now build in hours into that support person who has a similar similar need for skill set as what would support the town administrator slash select board office? Does this now become a more sort of long term model that that supports the office but allows us also to engage a different model and then roll up the HR function? So this is what I presented to the Finance Committee. I know that, you know, I've I've been bringing this to your attention for a long time now. I didn't know when really would be the the appropriate time. I think now is it, and I can get into cost in a moment, but if there's any questions on the model itself, I would just want to hit those first.
Questions, Ben?
No, whatever, I I want to support you in making sure that you have the resources that you need to have a functioning office and that that works for you and, you know, reduces the times that you have to email us on Saturday.
Yeah. Two real quick ones. Most interested, I've heard you explain this to the Finance Committee, so I'm I'm pretty well up to date on the details, but I am also interested, moving forward, to hear more about the ATA function, how you envision the ATA being played out in that role in that new hire, so interested to hear about that in the future. And then this admin support floater, I believe, if I heard you correctly, that the idea is that in the town clerk, town clerk's office, there are times of more intense need for that, like around elections, and that the ability for the person to float between two two offices is quite helpful in that regard, because they're not always needed as intensely in the town clerk's office and could float one way versus the other, depending on where we are in kind of an election cycle and so on.
Right. So two two things to that point. One, the ATA HR director, we do have a job description for it, which we developed by looking at other towns. It's a very common position for towns our size because of sort of this need and the way that they went in the past. The idea behind it is, again, you know, the treasure collector and the town administrator have been doing HR for a long time, and we also do our other jobs, right? I mean, there is a, there is a significant HR need within the town, but my opinion is, once we set up this function as an HR sort of office, that the actual day to day work for the HR director would leave time to do other things under the ATA that supports the town administrator's office and a number of other departments that rely on the town administrator, that sort of ends up with that that individual getting spread thin, whereas there this could add essentially another point person that ties a number of things together. From a project management standpoint, it's a phenomenal fit for that reason, too. And at the end of the day, when it comes to recruiting and getting somebody in that role, I think it's the right model to get the best person that's going to give us the best bang for the buck. You're going to find somebody who has the HR background that we need just from an operational standpoint, but somebody who's also looking to advance their career, most likely on the trajectory of being a future TA slash TM in other towns or potentially this town if if I go somewhere, right, and then you
Would you say to Mary?
Um, and so, you know, I I think it adds redundancy within the town, it adds, you know, it adds another sort of project manager role that currently we, you know, we sort of don't have at all times when when these things pop up, but also gives us the the sort of HR function, it gives us two dedicated HR staff people, right, and you have a real HR department based on a number of factors that you look at when it comes to HR, based on, you know, the number of employees and those types of things. The workload is two dedicated HR people makes a lot of sense based on our FTE counts and those things. As it relates to the floater role, a number of things with that position scalability makes sense, right? When you get into especially presidential elections, forty hours a week is just, I mean, it's just the reality of it, right? The other thing that that Liz Greendale did in in advocating for that position before this conversation sort of evolved was to say that the workload in that office, because of the changing, and some of it is COVID related, but those changes, when it comes to early voting and those types of things, are here to stay, that the workload has changed in town clerk's offices and makes sense for that to begin with. The scalability on our side is really going to be, from our perspective, would be, we really need hours that we can count on for our own scheduling to make sure that what you call the town administrator's office, you get through.
Travis, on the ATA HR director's position, what percent of the time do you believe the person will be doing HR work versus other?
So we still, we did that sort of analysis on the the So, we still, we did that sort of analysis on the admin support floater role. The ATA HR director, I would anticipate that would be part of the posting and the sort of outreach on it, if this is approved and approved by town meeting. You know, I think at the end of the day, sixty, forty HR to forty sort of everything non-HR would be probably how I would see it going for at least the beginning of the year. Theoretically, especially as, you know, our HR benefit specialist person has sort of come up to speed even faster than we had hoped, it would really come down to how much, you know, how that relationship is working, and could get more in the fifty-fifty range. But, you know, hours to sort of actual breakdown, I think, would be part of, you know, the way we would post it. We would want somebody to have the expectation coming in the door as well. And so, I think that analysis-
Another way to look at that is, I would hope that the role would not have more than fifty percent HR. That's my hope. There's an enormous amount of capacity that I view that comes across your office all the time, that is non-HR, that needs more deep dive, more support, more management. That's my opinion. But, if Mary's doing this HR manager's job now, to some extent, she's not doing fifty percent, she's doing some number. What you're saying, though, is that right now, within compliance and other normal HR businesses, we're meeting the expectation of what other comparable towns are doing. There's a capacity gap there, though, that Mary doesn't achieve, because she's not an HR specialist with all the time in the world. That's where this position is starting to grow into. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll find out more when the posting comes out, as Tina indicated, what we can expect the role to expand into and look to touch going forward.
Absolutely. No, and I think, you know, quite frankly-
That includes education and skills and experience.
Absolutely. And based on, you know, my previous, my conversation on Tuesday with the finance committee, I think at this point, I have no problem, sort of, if this is the general direction and people feel comfortable with this change in model, to get that sort of out there for any feedback. You know, again, it's the ATA HR director is, we're not creating something that is, we're not reinventing the wheel here. It's a pretty common position in a town our size. At the same point, there are things that are pretty Holliston-specific, and we want to make sure we tailor these things, too. And so, I'm happy to sort of start that, that part of this conversation, if sort of everybody's on board. So, let me just show you the numbers, then, if everybody's comfortable with that. As it relates to the omnibus budget, this is generally speaking what it would look like. And this is what I presented to you. And I did get a little bit of feedback that people were uncomfortable with one component, and I'll get into it in a second. But, the change in office manager, this increase looks more substantial than it is. In reality, the FY21 budget was based on the clerical salaries being for a thirty-hour employee. Due to a number of reasons, that position became thirty-five for office coverage to begin with. So, the twenty-one to twenty-two comparison for that regard doesn't fit. But the, in yellow would be the office manager model, and that would be thirty-five hours. We'd have that as a full-time, whereas the previous, that person who will be filling that was previously at thirty hours because of the old model. The only other thing I'll point out here before I get into the sort of final aspects is that everything in blue here includes what was approved in the supplemental budgets. We've made a change in all of the sheets that I sent to you and the finance committee, and we'll be posting this most likely after I talk to them tomorrow night, is that I would like the FY21 column to tie out to what was the original omnibus budget plus the supplemental budget in December. It's important to me from a, from a standpoint, and the finance committee agreed with that. So, one thing I would point out is that this looks like a substantial decrease in the select board budget, but one thing to point out is that the original professional services did not include a hundred and eight thousand dollars of this. The reason that I included that at the point was we had not yet changed the MTC agreement. And we have a couple of other items that we've covered under executive session. I've actually covered the finance committee as well on executive session to sort of let them know why I felt that was a prudent thing to do in December. But at the same point, from an apples-to-apples comparison of twenty-one to twenty-two, if you remove that hundred and eight thousand dollars, obviously, we're looking at an increase in the select board office, which I just want everybody to be very clear on. So, the impact here is to go from what would have been seventy thousand plus a COLA in FY22 to what we've sort of put here on the M4 schedule in the ninety-eight thousand dollar range. That is an assumed amount. Obviously, it would be based on the person that we get, qualifications, those types of things. I could see the number coming down, especially if we go with somebody, you know, who has the qualifications, but is really sort of, we're projecting into this role, we think is a good fit. But, you know, we want to grow in Holliston and present an opportunity. We may be able to go lower than that number, but this is based on the M4 schedule, so at ninety-eight thousand, that's a substantial increase, as you see. I tried to offset that slightly by removing-
Okay. For us to get, you are planning to put the M4 schedule into Article 1 for approval, correct?
Right. So, the M schedule will be in the warrant regardless, and we'll get into that in a second.
Yeah, I didn't want to forget, but that, that I was being dodged.
So, it would be, it would be on the M schedule as M4.
Got it. Thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
So, the other things I tried to do, because that's the last time you saw this budget, first of all, we had ninety-nine thousand five hundred as the professional services. I have removed fifty-five hundred dollars from that with the idea that a number, a significant portion of that legal service is, now that we have MTC, which does everything, including litigation for a flat fee of sixty thousand dollars per year, I had a substantial amount of money set aside for labor council, which is not under that agreement, and we do separately, and quite frankly, we've relied very heavily on, because we don't have a dedicated HR professional. One thing would be, it's possible that we substantially reduce our use of labor council, but what I don't want to do is cut that out and hamstring a new HR person coming in potentially in twenty-two. So, I cut it back, but I didn't gut it, essentially, right? So, I reduced what you had previously seen in this line down to ninety-four thousand, which is a net decrease of fifty-five hundred from my, from our original proposal. I also removed the COLA from the town administrator's line to sort of help balance, which I received feedback from FinCon members and select board members, that they would be more comfortable if I did not do that, for a variety of reasons, mainly being that the reason it's in there is that we don't have fluctuations every three years when my contract comes up. And I'm fine having that conversation. At the end of the day, what I'm trying to do is, I understand that this model has a cost, and what I'm just trying to do is make sure that we can fit it in here, because, as I said, it is a priority of mine. I think it works for the town in the long run. It works for succession planning. It works for actual operations. It works for a number of reasons. And, you know, that is my priority. So-
I'd like, I think we should put your percent back in, Travis.
I agree.
What I can do then-
That's fine.
-would be to further lower the professional services by the same amount that I had taken out and sort of balance it that way, to keep this bottom line, if you'd like to vote it tonight?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
And one of the reasons is because, and it's noble, right? Don't get me wrong. I personally think that when folks offer up that kind of an opportunity, it's quite eye-opening and noble. But, I hope I'm not offending Paul LeBeau, if he's listening, but Paul did that a lot over the years, and that's the kind of person he is. He's a very kind man. But, the outcome was a suppressed salary, and the value of what he was making when he retired was dramatically lower than the market should have. And that didn't play out well when they went out to replace him. They were looking for somebody of the same value. We don't want to undervalue the position. You deserve that. It's a contractual obligation. I think we need to uphold. It's not going to break the budget. That's just my opinion. Any thoughts on that?
No, I agree. I think we should uphold the contract.
Okay.
So, if, this is a revised dollar amount, so I'd ask you to re-vote this, and if you're comfortable with this bottom line, I would simply make that adjustment to what we discussed and the feedback that I also got from the finance committee, and thank you for that. And I understand, actually, that context has been provided to me as well, which I understand, and I agree with, I think, you know, it does hurt when you need to have fluctuations every three years or those types of things as well. So, if you want to vote this bottom line, I would net it with the professional services. I think it still leaves an appropriate amount that would have access for the new HR person to use labor council.
Sure. I will make a motion to approve the revised select board's budget for FY22 in the amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. I'll make that motion with a question. And is that labor council, is that a flat fee that we pay them, or are we-
We do not. We pay them off.
Pay them based on, we do.
MTC offers labor council services, which I'm not entirely sure where we came up with this agreement. At the end of the day, I've, I've found, working with Dan Brown and Kevin Feely, Brown and Feely is the firm, we use, generally speaking, Dan Brown for all items, non-healthcare-related, and Kevin Feely for healthcare-related, but they do allow it.
I will second that motion.
All those affairs, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And let me just stop this, because I'm going to scroll through, and I don't know where I'm going to end up. But I-
What are we changing tonight, two or three?
Uh, we're going to change two tonight, because the water budget, bottom line does not change. But, what we've done is, now that the DPW contract has been settled, which impacts the highway and water budgets, I, we've repopulated the budget to show the actual costs and where they are. I sent that off to the finance committee, and the bottom line of the highway budget changes very incrementally. But I prefer, if you would vote to amend it, we wouldn't, I will not ask for a vote on the water, because, again, the bottom line does not change, although you will see a different presentation. And let me just pull this up. This may be a little bit smaller. I apologize for the longer budget, but as you see in orange, the things that were impacted, the contract was settled. In yellow, how it was balanced. And, as I mentioned, the blue is the supplemental appropriation up on twenty-one. So, the revised balance, if you can see that, then, that would be the motion. And again, the bottom line, full budget, once you factor in the adjustment in twenty-one, is actually a slight decrease from twenty-one to twenty-two. Are you going to make the motion?
If you could, then, thank you.
I'll-
Do you want to see it, or?
No, I can see it. I just wanted to know if anybody had any comments or questions before I did. I will make a motion to approve the revised DPW highway department's budget for FY22 in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars.
I'll second that.
All those affairs, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Karen.
Thank you. And I was hoping to have another budget for us to review this evening, but our conversations earlier in the evening did not go where I was hoping, and so-
Travis, quick question on budgets. Just to confirm, early on in this process, you said we're going to change the way the omnibus looks, in that we're not going to vote all the subcategories of the budget. We're only going to vote the bottom line to make the use of the budget more flexible. Is that still the goal for FY22?
Sure. And I think now that we're at a position, Sharon and I are at a position, I think we can circulate, you know, sort of where that's coming out. But let me just-
We're just voting one number per department now, right?
It would essentially be two. The most common way is to vote personal services and then other operating expenses under the budget, right?
Good.
There are a couple instances in town where we also have capital L. That would be the third category. But we were sort of told by, we were told by town councils that a number of, a number of groups, especially during COVID, had started to just vote bottom line budgets. I, I'm more comfortable in the personal services versus operating. I think for a number of reasons, what you always want to be doing is making sure, especially as you have increased personal services costs through collective bargaining agreements and cost of living adjustments, that you're not sort of balancing your budget by removing all of your operating costs, right? So, you end up with people, but not the supplies necessary for them to do their jobs. And so, it's an important dichotomy of those two lines, and I think that that would be the way that I would vote it. But what has happened, and this is what I noticed my first day on the job, was, you know, what we were voting was four lines within each budget, right? So, the select board would be personal services, purchase services, supplies and materials, and other expenses. In reality, you put purchase services, supplies and materials, and other expenses as one line voted, right? And then that way, it also requires less transfers at the end of the year between those things, that really, a department head has the ability to say, "I need, I need to sort of increase this license fee for this year, or I need to buy this in this category, and I'm willing to forego that in this category," you know, and make those decisions for their department.
Two quick questions, John, if I may.
Sure.
So, will the finance committee, then, be presented with that abbreviated or condensed?
No, at all times, in any of these scenarios.
So, they're making recommendations on the full, yeah.
The full budget would always be presented and always available. It would be, to a certain extent, the way that the moderator is reading it to the, right? And so, that version would need to be available.
But then in June of twenty-two, the year-end transfers look different.
Yes.
Because we don't have to go through from line item blah, 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 to line item blah, 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 for a transfer within a budget, because if we've done it that way, personal services and other, you've got much more movement, like John said. So, you, we probably won't see quite the same number of year-end transfers twelve months out from June of next year. What on earth?
I'm not going to go there, but I, you're hypothetically correct, but- There'll be less ticky-tack ones. There's still going to be ones where personal services could run over for a department that's going to require them to look outside of their department, those types of things. Those are the types of things that, you know, when we can't control. I think what you're describing, though, you know, we're adding a little bit more flexibility for department heads to be able to solve their own problems without looking externally. But at the same point, you're not eliminating that potential.
Well, I'll tell you what. Let's not entertain hypotheticals.
Anything else under this category, Mr. Henry?
No.
Just one. Let us move on to the annual town meeting warrant discussion.
All right. Very quickly, we don't need to get into this, and I will, I will-
No guarantees on that, but-
I will let, let the Holliston reporters know they don't have to crop and paste this. I could send it to them, but it's also in draft form, just for sort of conversation purposes. One of the things that we'll look to add to the warrant this year is a spreadsheet that shows the balance of previous warrant articles, the original budget, the beginning balance of this fiscal year, what's been expended, and what is the balance as of March thirty-first. So, under the select board, for example, this is the article number by the town meeting that it was voted at, the original budget, and then sort of all of the accounting within the fiscal year. It's thrown down by departments, as you can see. The reason this is important as it relates to the conversation we're about to have on the warrant is that certain things may have funding sources that would be considered other, and that means that it's not raised through taxes, it's not from free cash, it's not from a reserve, it's from another balance. And one of the other funding sources that we generally see in municipal government, not specific to Holliston, is a previous warrant article balance. So, for example, under select board-
Go to the fire department. That's always a good one.
Yeah. The chief is-
We'll get some answers tonight.
Uh, shaking his head, although he will actually come up with one of the points I'm going to make. So, the town hall septic, for example, it's a good thing, chief. It's a good thing. The town hall septic, for example, was based on a design that was going to pump out back. We're now having a conversation about a gravity system that would work in conjunction with a little bit of property that we've had a discussion with, with the First Congregational Church. The cost of sort of adding access to land, all of the actual infrastructure of a tank would be on our property, if anybody's concerned with that. But, you know, you do need space for these things. The, and the cost of that, which we need to make sure that we reflect, will be on the warrant to make sure that the church is compensated for that land. That money can come out of this under fifty thousand dollar balance, leaving us enough money to do the project with a gravity system, which is much more economical for the town in the long run and environmentally friendly. So, you know, the article will be there to make sure that the transaction is approved by town meeting and can be finalized, but the funding source is other, because it's from previously approved money. It's not new tax dollars. It's not free cash, right? So, that's one example. The other example was the tax request that we'll still get into further discussion on, but the funding source currently, and this is where I mentioned, chief actually will come up, a very comparable source is a previously approved traffic signal preemption and monitoring equipment. There's a very close connection to what those are. I could probably even argue that rather than going through town meeting, we would just charge it to that remaining balance, because the description of material is the same. At the same point, I think for clarity and for everybody to sort of be on the same page and, you know, put everything on paper and make sure people understand where the dollars are, would be to have the article for the tax request, but the funding source would be essentially other, and again, it would be this balance. I had that conversation with the town accountant. She agrees. So, I just wanted to add that context as we get into the next conversation, which is warrants, if that may come up. Any questions on that, or something else?
Uh, just one. When do these, when would these be considered closed? Like, when does that happen?
Yeah. So, and that's actually came up in a previous town I worked for, where there was a motion that they wanted to have these articles have a sunset provision. We looked at it, and legally, it was a little bit unenforceable. At the end of the day, it falls under the role of the town accountant. And so, what happens is, on an annual basis, in a different format than this, I tried to make it this as, you know, as readable as possible. When you look at it from an accounting standpoint, it's much more, it's just a system generator, right? But so, what will get sent around is kind of, here are the things under, that you had previously asked for, and there are balances. Do you need this? Justify why you need it, what you would use it for, and how it ties out to the initial use. So, on an annual basis, department heads will need to respond to the town accountant, explaining why the balance should be left open. explaining why the balance should be left open. If they don't have an explanation, or if the balance is essentially the minimus, it will be closed out, and the money will flow what would be to free cash at the end of the year. So this is another thing, you know, between the town accountant and the auditors that would be reviewed as well.
Okay. Great, thank you. Anything else to see things under the warrant discussion?
Yes, so I think at this point, my, where I am is going to be, I'll make a couple points, but overall, you've seen this list, again, to the Hollison reporter, I will send this to you, so you don't have to crop. Not substantial changes, but there has been one, the removal at the bottom of the marijuana delivery, that is strictly because of our, our direction from town council on it, it's not being necessarily needed at the moment, but keeping an eye on it. Town council has presented, which I forwarded to you, the backup that I requested, to say, you know, just making sure that the town is in fine shape if we remove this article, and town council did that. So that would be removed between now and when the warrant is finalized, we would open the warrant at some given time, remove that, and then reclose the warrant. There may be other changes that come up in the next two weeks, essentially, where we'd want to do something similar, but at the moment, that's the only one that I have. The next thing that I would say is that, under the governance committee articles, I have received a couple updates that came out of, so the submission of the two articles came from the governance committee, there have been a couple tweaks that they've added. I would argue that, you know, they're somewhat on the line of a substantive, could they be made sort of administratively, but I would say that at some point between now and when the warrant is finalized, we'd want to open it, accept those changes, and close the warrant. We don't need to do that tonight, but we do need to do it in the next two weeks, most likely. What I would like to do is make sure that those changes, as they're sort of addressing some of the feedback that they've received, is that we get that information up online so that anybody going to review where they are, that we have that. So at the very least, I would just like to sort of get direction from the board, that if you don't want to open the warrant to do these things now, you want to do it at a future time, that you are comfortable with accepting changes from the governance committee that I can then put up online, essentially.
Can I just add a comment to make on that?
Go for it.
They still have one more public hearing, or not public hearing, but one more public forum, so I would say the board should wait until they've had that public forum, because there may be other amendments that they decide to make after they have that, because I think some of, I don't want to speak for the governance committee, but I would imagine they were influenced by the last public forum to drive some of the changes, perhaps, maybe not, but I think it's reasonable to expect that when they meet with the public again, there may be changes that they consider, and so perhaps to wait, to open the warrant, to accept those final changes until after their last public forum.
Fine with that, that's good.
Uh, my only comment about that is just we want to make sure that the, we still, we have enough runway to be able to do all these things, because the timing might be a little tricky.
We have until April 20th.
And they're...
April 20th to make our final choices.
Right, so it depends on when their forum is, to make sure that we are able to make those.
So we have next week, the 12th, we have the 20th, which is a Tuesday because of the holiday, I think if we are generally comfortable with finalizing the warrant, by that time it would be ideal, theoretically, following Monday would be doable, but it's on the line. So that's one thing, it sounds like we won't open tonight, but I will, I will sort of indicate that the changes that they're looking to put forward, we can incorporate, put on the website so people have access to that. The other thing I would say, essentially where I am with this warrant, is that I'd like to get the written word in front of you, I know it's good reading, and you're, it's time to be sitting outside now, if the weather's getting nice, and reading the warrant, but I do need to sort of know how we'd like this warrant to flow, and I'm open to some suggestions. What I will point out, and I believe I mentioned briefly last week, is that we have a couple citizens petitions that would impact bylaws, generally speaking, citizens petitions always go at the end of warrants for a number of reasons. We have some other items, such as the governance committee, and also a non-substantive renumbering of general bylaws article from the clerk, that, you know, could be grouped at the end with those, it could be grouped in the beginning to sort of hit highlights what we know is going to be a relatively long conversation. But once I know how we want this structured, then I can put numbers on it, and we can sort of look at a document that is a little more comprehensive and understandable.
We'll get there.
Okay. So we don't want to, we don't want to move anything around at the moment, or?
Not right now, no. But there is, there is some, there is some sympathy here, and one of the things I'm also going to be trying to think of is a way to get the consolidated amendment, what's that called?
Sensitiveness.
Thank you. Off my words, intent agenda items cluster as well. So I think we could, we could probably have some conversations about that in the coming weeks, pull it all together in terms of its format. What I think's lost now, because there's been some discussion about whether or not we're looking at it tonight or today, town meeting, we haven't had one in quite some time, but the breadth of this particular warrant seems to indicate it could tilt that way. And if it does, the concern is, if you go into day two, do you have something compelling enough to get 100 people back in the room for it? Unless we go back to that whole idea of reducing the quorum, which, you know, has some play right now, but there's some things to think about with respect to, maybe a conversation with Tom Clark, Tom Moderator, about how to balance what appears to be a two-night town meeting. Paul?
I do.
Is it driving you nuts not having numbers as much?
I think I'm going to have to put some numbers on here.
Thank you, go ahead, it won't bother me at all.
I like numbers.
I can handle numbers.
I prefer numbers over letters, but anyways, that's a different story.
All right, so...
Sometimes I say things later at night, just to see how much chief...
Go ahead and add numbers, Travis, to talk.
Okay.
You can do D1, like draft one.
A couple points, as it relates to the pension liability and recycling, the revolving fund conversations, I'll probably at least circulate those, these are conversations that come up from previous town meetings. The EV charging station, I had conversation with Chris Mayo specifically, but sustainability coordinator, facilities manager, I think, you know, regardless of where we are in the timeline of setting up grants, I think having that revolving fund in place, and I actually spoke with Mary Buskett as well, from a revenue standpoint, I think setting up that revolving fund, even if it's putting the cart a little bit before the horse, is going to be very important, because it's going to allow us to engage a lot of those grant opportunities, rather than needing to scramble if we were to get access to one. So I see that staying on, and I will get that language out. The road acceptance is some at point, as I mentioned, next week, you'll have that on your agenda, you need to have the public hearing, and it needs to be at least 21 days beforehand, so we can't do it on the 20th. Change use, you have the full backup on all the planning stuff, they took the votes necessary last week, they are in support of the scenic road on South Street, that stays on. I mentioned the easement, these are the ones that do have dollar values, and so again, you know, sort of just putting out the feasibility study for the DPW facility comes from raise and appropriate, as we had the conversation on tax support of warrant articles previously. Demolition on Nine Green, I also have a dollar from the consultant, which is now tied to that, and the Blair Square Design Engineering is a $45,000 number that came from me specifically, based on prior information.
There's a motion to hand to the table there.
Uh, because Ben and I will remember to bring something up under other business.
All right, I can't wait.
Yes.
If we get there.
Um, me too. And so at that point, if we're not going to open it, I will, I will just ask...
Yes.
I'm all set then.
All right. Any questions on the town meeting warrant? We'll go with Zoom. Very none, we move on to board business. Mr. Sparrow, we have some meeting minutes.
Sure. I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 10th, 2019.
Second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Karen?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 15th, 2021.
Second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 22nd, 2021.
Second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Um, we have a senior center donation that I'm going to make a motion to accept, it is from the Toontimers Band. In memory of our fellow band member, we are pleased to make this contribution to the Holliston Senior Center in the amount of $100. Just to read the comments, George was one of the founding members of the senior center's band, the Toontimers. He brought song and joy to the center and a smile for everyone, he will be dearly missed. So I'll make the motion to approve, to accept the $100 to the senior center on behalf of the Toontimer, from the Toontimer.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Karen? We have a contract, do we have to take a vote on that, or just?
Um, you will take a vote to award that contract.
Do we have an amount?
Should be in the folder, not in the packet, I apologize. Okay. Didn't have it on Friday, so... Sorry, I'm trying to find an amount. James, if you're there and you have the contract amount, I was going to try to go through my files, but do you have access to it?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, the contract amount is $74,420. The CPC funding is $85,000.
Okay, thanks, James.
Keep that motion, Ben?
So I will make a motion to award a library masonry repair contract in the amount of $74,420 to MJS Construction.
I will second that.
Actually, I believe the contract is more than $74,420, is it? James?
Uh, that's, that, yes, I'm here, that's what I...
Okay, I understood, I thought you, I thought you said the CPC money is 85, so the 85 was an appropriation from which 74 was spent, is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, thank you, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's Karen, that's the MJS Construction. All right, we moved on to other business, Beth, anything?
Uh, well Tina stole the thunder, so I'll let Tina bring it up.
All right.
No, I didn't steal any thunder, you heard a spark go off in my brain, that's what that was. Uh, so, um, we did a site walk of Front Street on whatever day that was last week, I'm going to call it Wednesday, and Tom Smith and Karen Sherman were incredibly helpful in helping to delineate some changes that are going to happen to Front Street. I think we're going to satisfy both resident comments that we heard through the Front Street forum, as well as Blair Square committee comments, looking for more green space. And so folks should see changes down there at Front Street to the proportion of asphalt and parking and additional green space, and Thompson has marked it out, so you can actually go down there and see what it's going to look like a little bit. So that was Wednesday of last week. And the money that will fund this will be from what's left over for shared streets and spaces grant that we received from the state last early fall, late summer. And that was one, and then the second was, not tonight, Travis, but perhaps another night, we can talk about trucks, signs rather, if we are approved for heavy commercial vehicle exclusions, we mentioned quite a few signs tonight, so I'm just, no, I would hate to get the truck exclusions approved, and then be like, well, now we have to wait to appropriate money to town meeting to put up signs, so I don't know if it's an FY21 issue, probably not, given the timeline, or if it will be in FY22, but I think that's a conversation we should have had at some level.
Okay, thank you.
I just add one point to that, on Front Street specifically, not included on the vote, because you've already taken it, but include in your packet, is the letter that you'll sign that will go to the clerk's office to update the traffic rules and orders, and I believe what we also need to discuss at a future time, which I think we can tie to a variety of conversations, will be whether or not we want to begin the public discussion of furthering the one way beyond the point that you voted, which is fine.
Very good. Anything else? All right, the only business I have is a little bit of homework for Chief Cassidy. We're a little over a month away from town meeting, we haven't had any conversations about extending town meeting date, I don't think that's in play, but I would like you to report back next week on the readiness for the space. We've spent a fair amount of time back in December, when COVID was in a different place for Holliston, but I'd like you to report back how it will look again, and any recommendations for quorum change, for example, if that's part of your thinking. If you wouldn't mind the next week or two, make it known to us in your coronavirus update what your recommendation is, and how ready the schools are to receive us, presuming it's an auditorium, correct? We don't know. We'll see how that plays out, well, if you could be kind enough to let us know in the next week or so, that'd be great. Any other business this evening?
Uh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention one other thing, the senior parade that you previously voted, the request for May 23rd, which is a Sunday, has been asked to be amended to May 22nd, which is a Saturday, unless I'm aware of something that would change your original vote, I don't think that's necessarily a problem, but I just wanted to bring to your attention.
The only thing that comes to mind is, when they make their appeal for those kind of things, they usually run them by Holliston PB and others.
Right.
So I went back to them. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, because you took a vote.
Okay.
Should we amend our vote to reflect the new date? Probably wouldn't hurt.
Sure.
Make a motion to amend the senior class parade from May 23rd, 2021, to May 22nd, 2021.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's Karen, you see, vote trust, okay?
Perfect.
Unexpected, but a little clean up under other business. Uh, that is it, this evening we will adjourn for executive session, reason number two for collective bargaining, stop return to open session, while entstone a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make that motion with the comments that we want to get on the regular session.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sign, aye.
Tina, aye.
Ronan, aye.
That's our line.
Thank you very much, Holliston, have a great evening, we will catch you next week.